All right, so the role call, I am the Board Chair Carmen Colton and I am present. Vice Chair Hans, um, Board Member Jane Turner.
Present.
Member Gina Johnson-David.
President.
The first thing on the agenda for we have a very head agenda today is school climate survey data and Mrs. Frances Colton will lead that session.
Hi, good morning, Board Chair Dr. Colton, Vice Chair Utsch, team members of the board, Student Representative Satra, and Superintendent Dr. Timo Wetter. School climate rating is a diagnostic tool that's used by the Georgia DOE to determine if a school is on the right path, on the right path, to school improvement. It is a part of school accountability as each school receives a rating of a one to five with five stars representing an excellent climate and one star representing a climate most in need of improvement. So as we consider these ratings, we can think of these as Georgia's official school climate indicators. Climate ratings are also our CSD key performance indicator for student well-being. This app this morning, we will review the most recent star rating for CSD schools, dive into a sample of the data related to the rating, and discuss activities underway to ensure that CSD schools are continuously meeting this expectation and fostering a healthy school climate for all students. So, as you are aware, we monitor student discipline and we're going to start reporting on attendance to you this year. So this may be the first time that you've actually heard on school climate because since COVID it has been paused, the just star ratings have been paused by the state. To build and sustain an engaging and inclusive culture in our schools, we have to understand how students, families, staff are. But we will be looking at the surveys which cover those aspects. As we move forward, please remember that state accountability reporting and data is a little wonky, so other data associated with the Georgia DOE reporting school climate ratings lag. For this reason, today, you're going to be looking at the ratings from the 23-24 school year, which were released in March while we unpack a little bit of the. On this slide, you see the 23-24 CSD school climate star rating. The data is considered our baseline since, again, this is the first time since Georgia DOE has resumed reporting on this post-COVID. Our goal is for all CSD schools to have a rating of four stars or higher. We are almost there for all but one. These ratings do not affect a school CC RPI score, but they are reported on the same public website. From these ratings, we can see when you put all the data together, surveys, student discipline, safe and substance-free learning environment, and school-wide attendance for teachers and students, that CSD schools are meeting the state of Georgia expectations. So the climate star ratings for the 24-25 school year are not out yet. However, we do have the results of the survey, again, that's what we will be looking at today. And so high participation rates are very important to us. We know that we want to hear from multiple perspectives as we make decisions that impact our schools. So high levels of engagement for all groups is key. And we see that currently CSD stakeholders are exceeding the state averages in participation. So this tells us that our stakeholders do believe in this process and that voices, they believe their voices matter and that hopefully it will guide real change. Of course, as we celebrate the engagement, we also recognize that this is a living metric and we do see an opportunity for growth with parent participation in the upper grades. It is important for us to continue to educate parents that these surveys go beyond satisfaction. This relates to all topics related to school, including school leadership, student-teacher relationships, fair engagement, safety, and the learning environment. Department will continue to work with our guidance department to make sure that surveys are more accessible, promoting their value, and that everyone really understands that their voice really does drive meaningful change. Okay, so let's look at the surveys. So looking at the K-12 family survey findings overall, we see that families feel well-informed about school news, respected in their interactions, and welcomed into our school spaces. We also noticed that there was a praise of timely responses from teachers, and that's great because this is the culture that we want to foster and create. At the same time, we see areas of opportunity. While most families express a general sense of safety, only 67% reported feeling very or extremely confident in our safety practices. And so this informs us that we need to be more proactive and transparent in how we communicate our safety protocols, especially with our more recent implementation of the weapon detection systems at the secondary level. We want to ensure that our practices are not just strong, but that families understand them, feel confident in them, and know that they are designed to protect their children. Additionally, while the majority of families responded satisfaction with engagement opportunities, there is feedback that lets us know we do need to broaden those and diversify those opportunities to reflect the needs and the voices of our community. We also want families to feel more comfortable with addressing their concerns with school leaders. So the teacher surveys, they cover topics such as school leadership, collaboration, professional learning, safety, physical environment, and several others. This is the longest of all the surveys, actually. And so the feedback from our teachers reflects a strong, strong foundation of trust and collaboration within our schools. Many reported that they feel very supported with their colleagues, by their colleagues, and they feel pride in their school environment. We also see that because of the adjustments made to master scheduling to increase collaboration, it's great that 71% of teachers report having adequate time almost every day to deliver their planned instruction. Very importantly, 92% of teachers report knowing the steps to follow in an emergency. Teachers were also very honest with us about where they wanted support, greater clarity around the priorities of the school improvement plan, as well as the need to receive actionable feedback from their leaders. So as a district, we are responding to these things already. We've, as you know, implemented leadership strategies, feedback cycles, and also being more consistent and streamlined with principal communication and support to make sure that they have timely updates, messages that are aligned, and resources. Our staff group considers not teaching regularly scheduled classes and designated for support. So this may include anyone from the school nurse, to the admin assistant, to a counselor, right, different positions that may be supportive in nature. In the area of school leadership, we see that the staff survey aligns closely with the teachers' responses, particularly in the area of wanting to better understand the priorities based on their school improvement plan. And we are also pleased to see here that staff also responded high rates of knowing what to do in an emergency. It was also good to see that staff are looking forward to come to work and proud of their building and what it looks like. And the voice of the student, my favorite. So elementary and secondary student surveys are not identical because the questions are more age-appropriate. The categories, however, are similar to the teacher and staff survey questions in that teaching and learning, student-teacher relationship, safety, those are also covered. Students are also asked about student support, well-being, and attendance. It is great that over half the students who participated in this survey feel respected and feel prepared for emergencies. However, while elementary students are connecting very well with their teachers in the learning environment, we see opportunities here to increase engagement at the secondary level. As Beacon Hill and Decatur High School begin to implement our new future readiness curriculum, teachers will have at their disposal vetted, research, and evidence-based lessons and activities to be able to create and sustain those learning environments where we would like to see students reporting feeling both psychological safety but also physical safety, right, for both of those things which are so fundamental to the learning environment. We also want to, we also hope that the implementation of NAVIANS will help students set goals for post-secondary, and that will also help them connect to the relevance of their classroom. Okay, so in alignment with the new Senate Bill 123 compulsory attendance laws in Georgia, we want to know not just that we're improving attendance, but understand why students may be absent, and this will help us better address it. So it is interesting to see that students at all levels reported missing school due to family vacations. And this tells us we need to further partner with our families to bring about awareness around this and make sure that students are consistently attending school and because that's where they're going to get their academic and emotional growth and support. Additionally, at all levels, we see that students are facing stressors. And for secondary students, the stress specifically relates to school. For me, the fact that 24% of students are feeling, of elementary students are feeling worried underscores the importance of early mental health and the work of our future readiness framework being expanded into our elementary schools. I'm also reminded here of why we launched the framework at the secondary level, because there is a clear need to continue building our systems of support, connection, and resilience as students prepare for life beyond graduation. So as you have heard me say before, all students need to learn about self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship-building skills, and responsible decision-making. Another theme that I saw here, I wanted to highlight, is that as the academic and social demand increase, we want to increase the number of students at the secondary level who report that accessing student wellness services is easy or extremely easy. It is important to continue our visibility and our outreach in those areas for our students. And so as we conclude today, moving forward, we are already responding to a lot of the themes that we saw in this data. And you may notice that some of these efforts are efforts that are led by other division leaders. And as we hear about this, we will hear more about the progress as they present their state of the department, or a future board retreat, or a communication. And so the fact that multiple divisions are involved in responding to this feedback from the survey helps us to see that school climate is not just about the behavior of the students, about all the aspects that come together, the interdependencies that impact the learning environment, and as a district leadership team, we are all responsible. So I thank you for your time. Do you have any questions or feedback?
I have a question. Are there individual goals for the finding categories? You all have, for each of, you know, for the teachers, students, and staff, you have these findings. Do you have goals, want, you know, at least this percentage of folks to feel this kind of way, like, I mean, you had an overall goal.
With this star? Yes, I, for each particular char, we do not, I will say that there are over 10 categories, for example, in the teacher survey alone. Probably be very challenging.
There are more than what we saw.
This is a sample of it, yes. Trying to find the areas where we could see themes across our.
Could we look at slide nine real quick?
Um, yes.
This is 10, one back. Yes, right here. Um, so this is a little bit in line with Gina's question. I do think some questions, some results might be more indicative of overall progress than others, and so I do think there's probably an opportunity to go back to which ones we want to see the needle move on. Mine, when I take a look at 60% of students report feeling that their teachers create an environment where they can learn, do we have any sense, I realize that we don't necessarily set all of these, but do we have any sense? It's very different for a student to say, you know, eight of my, or five of my teachers do create an environment, but I have one teacher that I am not getting along with this year, and that's going to make me label this in the negative. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, it's hard to disaggregate the frustration a student may have with a single teacher versus their experience with all of their teachers. And do we have any sense when we look at that 60% number, how that might break out?
No, we don't. The way that the state has the question and gives us the data, there are, I can go back and look to see if there's other questions, because there's similar questions on the same topic, right, to see if there's a question about something further, right, with the relation to their adults in the building, but I.
Here's what I would say, right? If it's, if it is the case that we want to make sure that people aren't interpreting this, 60% of students aren't, or I guess 40% of students aren't actually learning in high school, that I don't think is what the data is saying, right? And so, and so just understanding that delineation between, I may have had a frustrating experience with all of my teachers, that's very different.
I remember, if I'm recalling the correct survey, like, when we took it, I think we took it in reference to the teachers whose class we were in, but since that was so distributed, like, pretty much, like, pretty much every period and class was covered.
May I chime in about this? Because I believe what you do find to answer your question, Hans, is that it's not a clear yes or no, but it's like a degree, like, somewhat consistently. So I don't think it's specific to, I'm in Ms. Anderson's class and I'm going to talk about Ms. Anderson, but a student is expected to look globally and then, because I looked at the questions last night, to revisit it. So I believe it's more like always, somewhat, never, or, you know, most of the time, sometime.
Then the 60% is reflective of a student saying, "all of the time," or "all of the time," I know, I'm asking, yeah, yeah, "all of the time," "most of the time," "some of the," so I guess I would say, if possible, you've got a couple of data heads around this table, so if possible, reporting the actual results out as they're recording.
Thank you for that feedback, Hans. And I definitely did that here, for example, where it says the one to two times a week, so I will take that feedback and incorporate that.
Right.
I've got some more questions. So we break it up with the students, elementary, middle, and high school. Are y'all looking at the K through 12 teachers? Because when I look at, I think it's 71% report having adequate time to deliver planned instruction, that could be good. On the other hand, if it breaks up, could it be teachers that may be working with far fewer students or have more of whatever? So do y'all look at that by level, just like the student finding?
Yeah, so what you're seeing today is that all districts report that comes in, but when, when this data came in, Ms. Newton Scott shared it with the principal so that they could look at their specific school, but there is a breakout of the by-school and elementary middle.
And then is there a theme, so in terms of, and I really helped knowing, or I appreciated knowing the staff because I wasn't sure who the staff was compared to the teachers, but I noticed some of the reported stuff in support and communication or protected time is similar, but then like staff, 79%, I think, look forward to coming to work. Is there a reason why the teacher and the staff presentations aren't entirely equal?
Yes, because I did have to pick the sample, right, of questions, if you will. The teacher one does have that same question. I did not include it here because I felt it would be important to include the performance feedback, whereas the staff did not have that particular question, but I still wanted to show that staff are, we want to, we want them to know that we see them as well, right, with what they're reporting.
And then this may be something for the state, but the survey, like, seems to conflate it. Sometimes it asks about school leaders and sometimes it asks about school administration or administrators. So is there a difference in level?
They do not.
I have one more question. So how, I guess, you know, I have my special ed teacher hat on, how do you decide, like, is 50, if it does, from the slide, 51% of the teachers, I don't remember what it was.
Oh, sorry, we're in the wrong direction.
Right there. Report receiving actionable performance feedback from the school. Like, how do you decide next year if you like to see 80%? How do you decide, like, you know, which, which themes you want to work on and?
So, so a couple of things. One, we have to remember this data is from not 24-25, but this data is from 23-24. It is so lagging.
The, the stars are.
The stars are 23-24. This part is 24-25. We already had feedback and observation as a big rock for the year that that's for. So if you remember when we talked about what are the things that the school leaders, there was, the school leaders said, "we need to focus on feedback and observation." And we did a lot of professional learning on that. So I'm going to step back another year before, from canvassing originally when I first walked in in 23, to what I saw in the school year of 23-24, I knew this wasn't happening. From a superintendency, learning what I learned coming in, and some of the questions that this board asked me around completion of TEEPS and ensuring all of that was happening and all of that, that tells me, those are indicators that, that's concerned. So I would say there's happy alignment with what this survey said and what I could see from the professional leadership lens of where there was a disconnect. So I will say that that 51, to support teachers and staff with regular observations, providing consistent substantive feedback through coaching practice, that's one of the things that walking in the school district was a question that I asked the teachers. Because one of the best ways to ensure students are going to receive high-quality instructions is to actually observe it. And when I saw that gas there, that's what helped us get to, we need to probably focus on that. But that data came after the fact.
So to Gina's point then, we ought to watch every year for a while that specific data point to see, like, what you're saying would be that indicates that that should jump up.
That should, yeah. And, and based anecdotally from staff, they will say they're in the, they're in classrooms more.
And I will say that, that was part of my method, if you will, this being the first time we've received this since COVID, right? Like, what are we doing that, how can I identify the actions that we've already started and, and, you know, launched in our tools to show that correlation? So yes, I will, I will track that.
I have a question. You noted in the last form meeting that relationship with teachers, the point.
Yes.
And here, how are you defining what you consider a school leader? Have staff that, leaders that you're talking about, instructors, like, the ones they talk about all the way up. And then, like, how are you, because that relationship could be very different or what they're, how are you, or was it defined in the survey at all, or did it get that?
I did not, that's a similar question to what Ms. Anderson asked us a few minutes ago, but it did not say the principal or the instructional coach, it just, it kind of loops it all under administration or leadership, if you.
And it, and it does speak specifically to school leadership, so. And, and that, that's something that, yeah, because it's given to the entire state, so not every school system has an instructional, not every school system. I mean, some people look at grade level chairs as leadership depending upon the structure of your school, so it has to be general enough so that it's applicable.
And I'll just say that that's why it's good that, you know, Medina does that survey locally, because then we can kind of get into the more, you know, weave of what our local staff is saying.
I think that's what I was wondering, looking at some of this, like, it looks good that you have teachers here saying, hey, you know, we want more actionable feedback for our teaching, but then I'm hearing we have this whole category of leader, right, the leader that is supporting the class. Is there an actionable item that, so each district has its own way of doing what it needs to for its students, correct? So the state's doing this kind of globally. So therefore, for our district, is there anything built in where then the district gets to assess how that stuff is working according to the deliverer's of instruction? So if I'm making sense here, it sounds like the teachers are asked, "are you getting this from your school leaders?" Right, and then y'all are coming up with this actionable plan. Is there anything to determine what aspects of that support teachers are identifying as helping, or, you know, you have the 71% saying adequate time, so it sounds like, hey, we address that with the collaboration. Is there any assessment model there besides the state survey?
I would say that, that through Ms. Newton Scott's support of the principals, I would think that that would come through that, that part.
It comes out in a lot of the focus groups and things that we do when we do canvas. So when you're conducting a canvas, it has multiple layers. It could be classroom observations, it could be data dives, it could be focus groups, focus groups with students, focus groups with adults. And so that is how you're getting quantitative and qualitative data throughout the school year that will help us to determine next steps and opportunities.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have, Mrs. Susan Avance from the Charter System Foundation. She is here today to do the annual charter training that's required of a board member for our charter as well. And so without further ado, I'm going to introduce her, and she's our agenda editor for the next 45 minutes.
Awesome, thank you. Well, I'm Susan Avance, I'm from Liberty County. I retired after 30-some-odd years. I retired as the chief academic officer in Liberty County and went to work for the Charter System Foundation. And so originally, I was South Georgia, because I do live just south of Savannah, but we've had some folks retire, so I am excited to be working my way up in the state. So I'm happy to be here. Please feel free to stop me at any point in time if you have questions, but we're going to jump right in. A few things we're going to talk about today, a few charter system reminders, some roles and responsibilities, some things in your contract, and then looking at some examples of flexibility in action. Okay? There are 48 charter systems in the state of Georgia. As you know, you had to make a decision several years ago whether you're going to be strategic waiver charter system or status quo, and these are the 48 that chose to be charter systems. Basically, what it is to be a charter system, it's a contract between the local board of education and the Georgia Department of Education. So just like any contract, there's two sides to every contract. Your side says that you will have local school governance teams at every school, that you'll use flexibility to implement innovative practices, and you have a higher accountability than other districts. On the other side of that contract, the state board says they will grant broad flexibility from state laws and rules, which I think for most people, that's the most, most important part of the contract, and they're going to give you some additional funding, of course, subject to legislative appropriation. Those are the two sides of the contract. Um, within that contract, you do have, again, we've said the additional funding, local school governance teams, flexibility and innovative practices. Those innovative practices are critical because they are in your contract. And we'll talk about what your innovative practices are just as a reminder. Um, but they are part of your contract. You also have bylaws for all of your school governance teams. Uh, part of that is open records and open meetings act. Those are not wavable in any way. Um, and then we're going to talk very briefly about, um, some other things that are not wavable. But your bylaws will have how your members are selected, how many are on a team, how the voting takes place. It outlines all of that, um, how they help make decisions. You also, in your contract, have a governance matrix, um, which helps you make sure that your school governance teams are making decisions about the right things. There's five areas on that, um, and it just kind of guides the work of the school governance team. Of course, here's the structure. You have the local board of education. The district budget, the group personnel, the superintendent develops the district budget, delays and directs, uh, district personnel. Then you have the principal that develops the school budget, recommends, manages and evaluates the school personnel. You have your school staff. And if you notice down at the bottom, you have your local school governance team. They can make recommendations to the superintendent. Uh, they participate in decision-making in areas that impact school improvement. That's the whole purpose of all things charter. It's to increase student outcomes, increase student achievement and better opportunities for our children. That's the whole purpose. If you, local, local school governance teams act as advocates and they support the work of the teachers and the principals, your school governance team should be your biggest cheerleader. And then also, they give you a varied perspective during that decision-making. You know, having your school governance teams and the makeup of the school governance team in itself brings all of the different perspectives to the table. Um, we all come with our own perspective based on our own experiences. And having all of those different perspectives at the table allows you to make decisions that are going to impact students and impact families. Um, and, and it, it just brings everybody together into one. Um, your community partners are going to come in with one point of view. Your parents may have a different point of view. I would have the perspective as a mom, a business owner and an educator. Someone else may have a perspective of a business owner and a parent. You have your principal who has a perspective of a principal, um, and perhaps a parent, perhaps a business owner. Um, but, but every, it brings everybody to the table and that's the whole point. Um, charter system supplemental funding, it is subject to appropriation by the general assembly. It varies from one year to the next, dependent upon the state budget. Um, it is used for expenditures that support charter system work. Um, it can, one of the few things that could be carried over from year to year, um, if you need to. And that use is determined by the district. There's a lot of flexibility in how that money is used. So how do you benefit from being a charter system? Again, it gives you local control and broad flexibility. Who better to make decisions for Decatur City students than people in Decatur City? Um, and so it gives you some flexibility. I think as educators, we have all said, oh, my gosh, we got this new law or new law, and what were they thinking? Um, but it gives us the opportunity to waive some of those that we know are in the best interests of our students and our families. It does give you additional funding. It gives you a shared governance model based on a variety of stakeholder perspective. Gives you the ability to create and implement those innovative practices. Um, and again, we'll talk about your innovative practices in just a few minutes, but that is a critical part of your contract. Um, it gives you the ability to leverage partnerships with communities, parents, business and industry and post-secondary. Those partnerships are a key part of how we increase student achievement and how we provide better outcomes for our students. That's why it's such a critical part of your contract and that's, that's why that piece is in there. Um, we do want to leverage those partnerships. And it gives shared ownership and commitment for providing the support, providing and supporting those educational opportunities for our students. So what does flexibility mean? It gives you freedom from most state laws and rules that govern K-12 public education. Um, there are some things that are not wavable, um, and there are some state rules that are not wavable. Um, and I'll be honest with you, more and more, we're seeing our legislators add that little part at the end that says not wavable. And we are, as a foundation, um, trying to make our voice heard, um, so that that doesn't continue. But if you remember several years ago, um, they made the EIP not wavable. And that threw a lot of districts off. I know it threw us off in Liberty when that happened. We have a tr- very transient population. And, you know, we have fourteen children come in. Well, with a military base, um, we would have children come in. They never leave it unmanned, so they're not going to ship out before they ship in. So they would ship in, we'd have this huge influx for about two weeks, and then they would be gone. And so it had a huge impact for us. And a lot of districts who were building those innovative EIP models that were working could no longer do some of the things that were working. Now, you can still have an innovative model approved by the state, um, but that's just one example. The literacy requirement, and I'm not saying we should be waiving literacy requirements, but that's one of the things most recently that are not wavable. Um, it is intended to be used in designing and implementing innovation. Um, and again, it's all about student outcomes. It's all about student achievement. That is the whole purpose in being a charter system. What's not included is anything federal. The federal government does not recognize charter systems. They would not know what it is. Um, if, if you walked up to them and started talking to them, I can attest to that. I went to speak with the Senate Education Committee about two years ago, the charter system. And guess what? The first thing was that they thought I was talking about charter schools. Yes, so we had to have a conversation about what the difference is. Um, so nothing federal is wavable. But also, any law that falls into one of these categories, and if you think about it, these are kind of those common sense categories that you probably wouldn't want to waive anyway. You don't want to waive anything as regards to safety. You don't want to waive civil rights. Um, you can't waive, we probably would want to waive some of that if we could, but we can't. Um, or any state law, again, like EIP or the literacy requirements that expressly states that it's not subject to flexibility. Okay? Everything else, if you need to be flexible, you get to be flexible. But just because we can, doesn't always mean we should. Um, I tell leaders all the time, you know, people start talking about class sizes, they start talking about flexibility with certification. Um, there's lots of things we can be flexible about, but don't mesh up your FTE in the process because we have seen that happen. Um, you can't earn more FTE as a result of being flexible. We've seen that happen too. Um, so you, just because you can, doesn't always mean you should. But the process of that is looking at your challenges. And I'll tell you, when Liberty first became a charter system ten, twelve years ago, I was so excited. I was assistant superintendent of teaching and learning. I'm like, okay, tell me everything I can waive and we're going to get busy. And Sheri, give me Sherman. He said, you're not thinking about this right. Find your problem, find your solution. Then if you need to waive something, you can. So I always remember that and I always share that. Um, but first you look for your challenges. Then you just develop, what are your solutions? We have some possible solutions, whatever our challenges are that we've identified. Do you need flexibility to do what you think is going to work for your students? If so, is it something that you have flexibility with? And the great thing about it, if so, you just do it real time. I tell you, charter system survives COVID so much better. It's so much easier. I'm not saying it was easy, darling, it was not. Um, but if we did have a much easier time because we have broad flexibility, we can make decisions in real time for our students without having to get permission, without having to ask, without having to do all kinds of forms and paperwork. So we were able to make decisions real time. And that's the whole thing with being a charter system, is making decisions real time in the moment as you need to and not having to fill out a form, not having to make a special request because we've got the flexibility upfront. So let's talk about your essential or innovative features in your contract. And we talked about your contract with the state. It says that you're going to amplify student voice by creating student representation with the board of education. You're going to. Let's just implement a long-term eco-friendly facility plan, expanding early learning opportunities. Establish a learn and earn apprenticeship that certifies students and student teachers in the science of reading. And ensure that students are college and career future-ready by aligning K-12 CTAE pathways to the city of Decatur workforce development need. So those are the ones that you wrote into your contract. Now, I believe your contract expires in twenty-twenty-eight. Am I right? I'm pretty sure I wrote that it was twenty-twenty-eight. So these are the ones you've identified. Now, what I will tell you is that those, that actually could look lots of different ways. Um, and so you have some great innovative features here. When you do go to renew, you're going to have to make the decision as to whether to keep your innovative features that you have now or whether you're going to change them. But also keep in mind that though these are listed in your contract, you can have as many wonderful innovative features that you want to have in your district. It's just, these are the four that are listed. Any questions on these?
How often do we renew?
Every five years.
Every five years. Okay. And then how does the state hold us accountable for reaching these?
I'm glad you asked, because that's the next part. There is accountability. And remember, I mentioned a few minutes ago, you have higher accountability than other districts. Um, and you could give the, the broad flexibility. The state says, I have flexibility, but you're at, you're at another level. So let's talk about that. So your responsibility is the local board of education. Um, you're ultimately responsible for all the duties to be formed by the charter system, to be performed by the charter system and the schools within the charter system. So lo- the local board of education, you are ultimately responsible. Go backwards. There we go. Um, in your contract, have goals. Goal one says during each year of its charter term, the percentage of charter school systems that achieve at least one of the following three measures shall increase by ten percent of the gap between a hundred percent and the previous year's percentage of charter system schools that achieve at least one of the following three measures. Okay? So it doesn't mean you're having to go up ten percent. Means you're going up ten percent of the gap between wherever you are, hundred. Okay? So you have to increase the CCRPI content mastery score each year while content mastery is below ninety. So if, let's say your content mastery is at eighty-nine. The gap between content mastery, the eighty-nine and the hundred is eleven. So ten percent of eleven would be one point one. So you'd have to go up by one point one. That makes sense? That's a very wordy thing there to me, very wordy. Um, you have to increase the CCRPI progress score each year while progress is below ninety. Um, or, uh, at least one of these now, doesn't have to be all three. Increase CCRPI by four percent of the gap between a hundred and the previous year's CCRPI while your CCRPI. And find four percent of that, that would tell you what you have to score at. Now, what I will tell you is that just because you don't hit one of these goals doesn't mean they're going to take your charter, um, your contract. What they're going to ask you to do is they're going to, what are you going to do to get there? Um, so it's not a situation where at the five-year point, they go, oh, didn't do it, boom, you're done. Their, their goal is definitely to, to continue your charter system contract, but you would have to explain how you're going to get there. Goal two, during each year of a charter term, the total number of charter system schools that achieve a school climate rating. So you guys were just talking about your school climate rating, that was very timely. Of four or five stars will increase by five percent of the gap between a hundred percent and the previous year's percentage of schools with a school climate rating of four stars or more. So again, you're looking at a percentage of the gap. And I know you only have one that was at a three. So, and it is very lagging data. If you were to survey today, you would probably see something very different, um, especially based on what you guys are already doing. With goal three, um, the charter system will operate in a fiscally sound manner as measured by not being designated as a financial high-risk system determined by the Department of Audits and Accounts, which is through the DOE. Thanks for that one. Generally, there's no issues with goal three. And then goal four, the charter system will foster individual school-level governance. That's why it's so critical that we have strong school governance teams because it is goal four in your contract. So all school governance team members will complete annual training. Yes, they do have to have training annually. They have to meet a minimum of six times per year. Now, a lot of districts meet once a month. Some do it for once a month for ten months. That's up to you, but the minimum is six times. All school governance teams have representation from a variety of stakeholders, teachers, parents, community leaders. That's why it's structured the way that it is. And charter system will create a spreadsheet listing the decisions made by each school governing team in the areas of personnel finances, resource allocation. I will tell you that traditionally, this has never been looked for. Okay? What they're going to ask when you go to renew is for your governance team members, they're going to ask, well, what kind of decisions do you help make? Uh, this is not something that it has ever been turned in as long as I've been in charter system world. Um, but when you go to renew, you just need to make sure that your school governance team members can articulate some of the decisions that they've been involved in. Through your goals in your contract. So let's talk about some additional accountability. Because there's other things in there too, and I've just kind of hit the highlights. Each charter system school is subject to all accountability and assessment requirements. I already said that. Accountability provisions for all of those codes, I'm not going to go through those, but includes teacher and leader effectiveness, student learning objectives, any corresponding rules and regulations, and subject to all federal accountability requirements under, um, elementary and secondary education act. In your contract, there is also additional wording regarding the annual report, which you guys do every year, it's due in November, I think it's November first, um, that you have to turn in and submit every year. That is in your contract. It also talks about open enrollment, addition and withdrawal of students. Telling you what you can and cannot do. I mean, your public school can't penalize students for withdrawing, those kinds of things. Um, additional accountability with state and federally mandated programs. Still has to follow federally mandated programs, um, governance structure and training. There's wording in there about that. Fiscal controls, and then there's other rules and regulations listed in your contract. Any questions about that? I just wanted to hit the high points because those goals, that's, that's what's going to be most important when you go to renew, and I believe again, it's twenty-twenty-eight for you guys. But as long as you're keeping the focus on student achievement and school improvement, you're always doing the right work. So let's talk about some examples, some innovative things. And I know, first of all, please know that when we go around the state, we pick out things we think you might be interested in. We share what you're doing as we travel, but you already know what you're doing, so I didn't put your slides in here in the interest of time. But you guys have some great things going on and we do love sharing those. So if there's something new, make sure we get a, a slide. Uh, we do have the Charter System Foundation Conference that comes up in November. Um, and that's one of the things that we do, a service that we provide for you guys. So hopefully some of you will be able to attend in the fall. So let's talk about some elementary examples from around the state. Do you have any questions about what we talked about so far? I know I'm talking fast, but I know we didn't have a lot of time, so.
I think, say, that's where we have the charter accountability and intervention, that's the CCRPI measure, SLP measure. Can you tell me where, you know, where the goals are that reference the student board, the students are number six?
It's your innovative practice system. It's your innovative practice, so.
Yes.
Those are the ones that you guys decided, because everybody's innovative practices are different across the state. And every district gets to make the decision what's going, what their innovative practices are going to be. So Decatur City is going to be the only one that's going to have a contract that looks like that, because you got to choose that B.
I just couldn't, I just couldn't.
Yeah.
Okay. And since we're at a point about that, remember when I, when I came on board, the charter contract that the state had on file had the old goals and old information. And so we aligned what was the 90-day plan to the All Indicator Strategic Plan, and then the charter contract, so that all of those three documents that are foundations to our school system are aligned and they all have the same information. And that's the goal, is that they're all working together, making sure that we're all, all those arrows are going in the same direction. And that can look a lot of different ways. That's the great thing about it, is you guys get to decide how it looks in your district, because, you know, it is your innovation. And I'll tell you this, too, sometimes, honestly, five years is a long time. So there are times that you get into an innovative practice and you realize it's no longer working. The state does not expect you to keep doing it, because it's on that piece of paper. Sometimes you may need an amendment. Sometimes it might be something as simple as a phone call. If it isn't working in the middle of that five years, we're not going to keep doing it just for the sake of doing it. So you do still have some flexibility within that five-year contract. A couple of elementary examples, just some things that I pulled out. Calhoun City was really having a hard time with students entering pre-K, not having the vocabulary acquisition that pre-K students need to be successful. So what they were seeing is they were getting pre-K students who were already behind coming in, and then guess what happened? They stay behind. It's a constant playing catch-up. So they decided they were going to do something a little innovative. They decided to do the mobile, mobile learning lab. That's actually a picture of it. That's the actual lab. I think the surplus bus. They reached out to a community partner and had the bus wrapped, you know, wrapped, they put on the buses. But here's the great part about it. They wanted to go support low-income housing and daycares, because that's a great way to reach out to that birth to four, or birth to three, whichever category you're looking at. But they needed people to man that bus. So guess who's manning the bus? Their high school students who are either early childhood education major, or the teaching as a profession, that development program, child development program. So they were able to put those high school students on there, take them around to low-income housing areas and daycares. The stu, the high school students in that teaching as a profession class, or that childhood development class, were actually getting hands-on experience with these little ones. So they, instead of sitting in a classroom learning about being a teacher, they actually had to write lesson plans. They actually had to develop lessons. They actually had to go and do center and rotation with these students at these daycares and these low-income housing areas. So it was a great experience for the high school students, but what they noticed is a couple of things. There were two impacts there, both of which I love. First of all, they had more students coming in prepared for pre-K, students that traditionally may not have entered with the vocabulary necessary. But the other one is that their local students were coming back to be teachers. Y'all, we got a huge teacher shortage across the country. We're all feeling it. Are y'all feeling the bus driver crunch too? That was after we got major bus driver crunch. But we, we still, we have, in my district where I have grandchildren, there's still 45 teachers empty, and school's been going on for two weeks. So, you know, this gave them an opportunity to grow their own teachers, and they have more teachers coming back. So I think this is a great program. Baldwin County also saw the need to have something a little bit different for some of their elementary students, not every elementary school, but they had some students who learned differently. They wanted to make sure that they were providing the learning styles that some of these students needed. So they have one of the few public Montessori programs for elementary. They actually are now going up to fifth grade this year. It's only one of five public Montessori schools in the state of Georgia, and it's the only school system in Georgia to offer head start Montessori, because they just recognized the need and said, you know what, we need to try this. It is something that parents have to request, but it is a choice, and it's a very child-centered Dublin City, I'll tell you, research shows most underserved population of students in the country is what? But I know, I heard somebody mumble it. What's the most underserved population in the country? Gifted. We do a lot of remediation. We do a lot of intervention. We do a lot of teaching to the middle, but it's our gifted and advanced students that are the most underserved students in the United States. Not saying we're not serving them, but we're underserving, underserving them. And y'all, we got to make sure we're meeting the needs of these gifted and advanced students. So Dublin City started the Irish Gifted Academy. If you ever have a chance to go, go see it. It's amazing. It looks very similar to Ron Barth Academy, and that's kind of the model they went after. Fred Williams will let you in anytime. You don't even have to call ahead. I texted him and said, I'm going to bring some people. He's like, go ahead. But it's an amazing program. But what they said was, you know, most schools and systems use a pull-out for gifted, one day a week. Well, they said, you know, these kids are gifted every day, not just on Thursday, or not just on Monday. So we want to serve them every day. Now, I will tell you, most places don't have an empty building, but they did have, happen to have a building they could use. So they have those students, they're still, they're still a student of record at their home school, but they travel every day to the Irish Gifted Academy. The other thing is, is they also will transport and accept, based on room, I mean, spots are available, students who are advanced but not necessarily labeled as gifted. But what they're doing is they're using it as a talent development program. So what they want to do is they want to serve those advanced students in the hope that we can get them qualified for gifted. In case you don't know, there's a significant difference in funding for an advanced student or a gifted student. So they're also using that as a talent development program where they can pull in their advanced students, working with their gifted students. All of the staff there is gifted certified, but those students are coming every day. So just something a little different. And again, it goes back to, like we said, what is your challenge? Do you have a possible solution? If you do have a solution, do you need flexibility? If you don't, keep it rolling. If you do, keep it rolling, because you have the flexibility to do it. Clark County, during COVID, recognized the need because, I know I've talked about this everywhere I've been, and I keep hearing it everywhere I go, that during COVID, it's like the social-emotional part changed for our students. These changed. But what Clark, it was Farnett Shores Elementary, they noticed that the students were feeling, they were having a hard time focusing, and they didn't feel valued, and they didn't feel, you know, motivated. Talk about that word a lot. So they actually, the principal asked the school governance team to do some research, because she said, you know, I kind of got my hands full with COVID. We know we need something. So could you kind of look into some things that would be available for our students? School governance team identified Franklin Covey's Leader in me, so they started using it. It was such a great success that Clark County ended up buying it for all of their elementary schools, because it did work. I'm not trying to sell that program. Don't let me think about it, to be honest. But that's the leverage of your school governance team. That's what they can bring to the table. It's not always about voting for this or voting for that, but sometimes you can ask them to break out into focus groups and help with some things too. And so this was one of the examples of that. Chatco, Chathuge County, the reason I love this, they had a five-week summer literacy camp, which a lot of us do across the state. We do literacy camps, we do math camps, we do all these different camps. The reason I love this is they leverage the power of social media. And what they did was all of the parents who had children who were coming to this literacy camp, part of being in the camp was making an agreement to be part of a private Facebook group. And so the teachers, every day, would send home great family lessons, lessons that they could do not only with their students, but with their, their younger or older siblings. And all they did was ask them to post either a review of the activity or a picture of their family doing it. This group is still working together, because the, the parents had so much fun with it. And it was as simple as snapping a picture or saying, we love this, or we hated this, just like, be honest. So they did leverage social media during math. We talked briefly about our teacher shortage, and there's a couple, a couple of examples here I want to give you. This is Union County. They had a workforce shortage in government and public administration. That includes police officers. I mean, that's all kind, all kind of different things. So they wanted to teach eighth and 10th grade students government and public administration courses and blend it with eighth-grade Georgia studies, which is fine. You have the flexibility to change that curriculum if you need to. Now, you're still testing over eight-grade standards, but they added that piece in there. Certified to teach that. So guess who they leveraged to teach the course? The SRO. Who better to teach the course than the SRO? So the SRO is teaching the course. So, you know, again, it's about being creative, and you do have flexibility with certification. There's some things about job career, job and career awareness. This was Liberty. And basically, they were losing some pathways, because there was no student interest at their career academy. So they bumped those pathways down to middle school, got those kids interested in it, and now those pathways were booming. The children didn't understand what those courses were about. Catusas, doing a From Here to Career, is a ninth-grade required course where they are leveraging the, the power of youth science to, and also some Elmore's Habitudes, make sure that their students are highly prepared, college and career-ready, and successful in high school. Couple of high school examples. Another one with flexibility, Hart County, they wanted to have some CTAE courses. They didn't have some people to teach it. One of them was the government, the government piece. There was marine engine technology. There's all kinds of new courses. So here's the flexibility in that. They didn't have anybody to teach that public administration course. So guess what they did? They got a former attorney, a retired judge, and a police officer. None of them could commit every day, but the three of them could commit to teach that course together. So they had to be creative. And so that's how they were creative about that, because they wanted to make sure that their students had it. This particular one is about flexibility for alternative programs. I'm not going to read a lot of that to you, but sometimes we have to have some non-traditional examples, or non-traditional facilities. Lloyd County, the learning loss after COVID, they have done an amazing job with making sure that they closed those gaps. A lot of places now have urgent care clinics on their campus. It's available not only to students, but also staff and community. So this is a particular one, is the Calhoun Middle and High School, and anyone can go to the clinic. So what they've noticed there is teacher attendance is better, because they can go on their planning period. Student attendance is better, because they can go to the clinic right there on the school campus, instead of having to take them somewhere else. So this is, particular one is, you know, Calhoun. And the great thing about this is they actually had to change their contract, I mean, their teacher contract a little bit. You know, it's, when you have a school or district-wide initiative, professional learning, of course, is critical, but finding enough subs and funding all the subs is sometimes a huge challenge. So they actually changed their teacher contract. It's still 190 days, so there was no change in pay. But they required the teachers to come in for two days during the summer as part of those teacher workdays, so that they could all be trained together and all get the same information, but didn't have to have any subs and didn't have to pay any cycle, because it was actual contract days. I thought that was pretty unique. A lot of our districts offer mini-grants for innovation and creativity. This is Dawson County. This is some of the things that they have funded with their mini-grants that they use as some of their charter funding for. Liberty changed their calendar to incorporate days for district PLCs. And so instead of 190 days, I mean, 180 days for students, they have 178 days, so that they can incorporate two days for district PLCs. They also have hired their retired educators to come back for intervention and remediation. And they're basically doing all, the retirees love it. They're fighting to get in, because it's all the things they love about teaching, and some of the things that they retired for, they don't have to do. So they're absolutely loving that. And of course, they're funding that with charter funds and with Title I funds. So for discussion in the coming months, as you proceed, and then when you come up to your new contract, because you will start the renewal process before it actually expires, what you want to kind of consider is what challenges do we still have since 2020, not just COVID-related? You know, in the last five years, what are some things that have changed about our community? What are some of the challenges that have surfaced? Do we have resources? We know we have resources that diminished. A lot of that federal funding went away. What has added or stayed consistent? You know, the new workforce development needs. There's a lot of growth in Georgia, lot of growth in Georgia. So are there new workforce needs in, in Decatur City schools? What are your biggest challenges academically in elementary, middle, and high? What kinds of social-emotional needs and challenges are your students and staff facing? And what are some priorities for your school, your system, and your community? As far as your innovative practices, eventually, you're going to have to decide, are these things still in progress? Are we going to continue with them? Have we fully implemented them? If not, how's it going? What do we need to do? Are there new innovative practices that we need to consider, based on the challenges that you have, and, and the challenges that we anticipate in the future? And then what are your greatest academic areas of need at the elementary, middle, and high school? And what can you do to fix those, or what are some ideas for that? And do you need the flexibility? So just some, some things to think about. Okay. Perfect time, I think.
Yeah, you've got about four minutes left.
Okay. Yes.
So who, who, to review those questions, you know, in terms of what's happening, what's going on in 2020 and where we are now? Is that an administrative thing? Is that a board thing?
These are just some recommended conversations that you have, and really, I think, everybody at every level. You know, where are we now? What are some things that we need to consider? I, I work with schools all the time. I was with school yesterday, and it's like, okay, let's talk about what your challenges are. So it may be at lots of levels, because the challenges change. So to say one person would be responsible, I think it's just ongoing conversation. But then really looking at, our communities in Georgia are changing. We have so many new industries that have moved into Georgia. I saw the other day that Georgia is now considered Little Hollywood. About who would have saw that coming? Not me. And I, I wouldn't have seen that coming. So there's lots of different things. I know I-6995, we have all kinds of new companies coming in over near Augusta and up in North Georgia. So that's going to change what your students are going to need also to be competitive. So that's kind of those ongoing conversations. But it is some of the things that when you are renewing your contract, some questions that, that may come up with that. I didn't answer your question.
I think then, now that you've asked it, I'm thinking, so you've got your school governance teams, your school leader, I can't remember, local? teams, your school leader, I can't remember, local?
Mm-hmm.
So there's that, and then the district, and then board, and then?
We have an extra layer with the SCLT, which is a representative from each of the local school governments. It's not required by the charter system, but it is something extra that we do here. So a representative from each of the school governance teams comes together and meets with the superintendent.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah.
I'd like to have a shot on that.
Thank you.
That's great. Wonderful.
Something I noticed was from looking at your examples there from all the other districts, the, kind of, the problems. So we solve that one problem, that multiple problems separate altogether. So the problems that, that, one school district with poor attendance at the high school across the district, or early learning, and two of the type, PTA, or two, try to solve so many problems at once. So that was just kind of what I...
Absolutely. And it really, your best innovative features, to me, just my opinion, come from a true root cause analysis. Do that root cause analysis, and come up with a plan of action. You almost guaranteed results. Um, I think, and I've been guilty of it in, in years past too, that sometimes we think we know what the concern or the problem is, but then when we dig and really do a root cause analysis, realize that that might have been part of it, but there was something else. And so you can find those very specific things that you can do that are going to lead to a, almost guaranteed impact because you've really found the root of the challenge. But you're right. I mean, sometimes these innovative practices are very broad, but sometimes they're very specific, and they do, they target a very specific root.
And I would say another layer we added to the training, because you saw there, our SLTs have to be trained annually too. Last year, we really focused on giving them time around a problem of practice so that they could brainstorm together, what are some of our issues, how might we address them? So we're building those components and depending on them annually with our SLTs, well, to try to get them to think of them.
Excellent. Excellent. And when you look at the charter innovative practices, so the innovative practices in the charter, um, it's really addressing two major pieces in this. Amplifying a student voice. Mia had to go for this part.
But hey, I saw her.
Uh, yes, and she's adding a lot too. I love that.
She does, she does. The others, the three, are really coupled together. There is all one piece, but it, that one piece addresses so many different aspects, from achieving gaps to literacy to retention and grow your own and understanding the science of reading and...
Right. Those, those other three are all together. And I would tell you, speaking of your, your student, um, first of all, kudos on that. I'm seeing a lot more districts around the state who have noticed what you're doing, who are now trying to do the same. Um, so you definitely have been a leader in that. But I'm, I'm definitely seeing a lot more districts around the state who are, are putting that student voice with the local Board of Education.
Kudos to, kudos to the board for really pushing for that and saying that that's what we needed to do.
The people are watching because they're...
We've shared it enough.
We're not done yet.
The debt is definitely renewed.
I love it. I love it. But the Charter System Foundation, we are always here to support you. Anything that you need, a superintendent will reach out, your, your liaisons will reach out, support chair will reach out, but whatever we can do. I mean, we are very much right now trying to advocate to the state so that we don't continue to lose our flexibility. Um, so that's a huge project for us. We also have a very big role in accelerated career because we did have to help kind of guide that. Districts did the work, but we were able to put some wording in there that our district, or we weren't, we were able to encourage wording that our districts wanted. So we're always here to support you. That's what we do. We work for you, and we definitely want to serve. So, I mean, whatever we can do for you, please always know. We'll get to it with chat.
Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoyed being here.
All right, team, we are ready for lunch, and we will have 30 minutes. We'll come back and talk with everybody.
Yes.
Welcome back to school, everyone.
Thank you. I think I know most of you in the room, but for those of you that don't know me, I'm Julia Bernas. I'm with the Georgia School Boards Association, and I'm going to be working with the boards for the next hour or less on ethics training. And just in sharing some of the conversations that I've been hearing, I know a lot of people are facing milestones this year with your children or grandchildren, or, um, I, I have personally have a, now a grandchild who is a freshman in high school, and she's taking lots of honors classes and AP classes and playing volleyball and is at school more than she's at home. So she's already getting into the swing of things, and we'll see. And the most challenging thing for her is, having turned 15 on August 1st, she still has not been able to get to getting her learner's permit yet because there's literally not been time between school and volleyball tournaments and such. So she's stepping into that, and it's been exciting to, to watch. She's the oldest of seven. They all live here, and it's fun, and they hit our house every Sunday. So, um, we're going to talk a little bit about ethics. That's something that permeates everything. There are a lot of topics around it. I'm going to give you all some interactive things to do to keep you awake since you just finished lunch. But you can see, there's, there's lots of words that describe, I mean, that it's everything from integrity and honesty to conscience, responsibility. This is a good definition, and for those in the back who can't read it, it says ethical behavior refers to actions that align with moral principles and values. It involves making decisions based on fairness, honesty, and respect for others. Ethical behavior, behavior transcends legal requirements focusing on what is right and just. It is a cornerstone of building trust and maintaining integrity in personal and professional relationships, and that building of trust is key. The two examples it gives here resonated with me right away. You know, when you go to see the doctor and you share confidential information with the doctor, you expect them to hold that information in confidence because that's ethical behavior on their part. And same thing in the workplace, in executive session. Maintaining that trust is what helps build your team. Sometimes there's a, there's a moral dilemma for you because the ethics talk about one way of behaving, and yet there might be something differently that you feel in your own conscience that may not sit straight with, with that. Just a quick example, the hardest decision I ever had to make as a board member was when we, it was recommended that we close the, um, elementary instrumental music program, fourth and fifth grade. It had been a fourth and fifth grade staple. They, the kids were still going to get chorus, but having to do away with instrumental music. I grew up having it in the fourth grade. My children grew up having it in the fourth grade. It broke my heart, but I knew that that was a time during the recession when the superintendent was trying to make cuts, and she was looking at programs, not staff members. She was trying to hold on to as many staff members as she could. And the Elementary Principals Association even came back and said, "We think that this is the right decision at this time." It kept me up at night. When it came time to make that vote, it hurt my heart to raise my hand. I knew that it was probably not the best thing for children, but in the long run, it was going to be the best thing for the district. And I still, I still think back, if I could make one change in my heart from my morals and my conscience, I would go back and change that vote, even though I know that somebody else would have been hurt as a result of that decision. So sometimes you're, you're pulled with what society says you should do versus what you feel in your heart is right. Same thing right here. Um, ethics refers to rules that a social system provides with us. Morals are your own principles, and sometimes you have to wrestle with that. Um, you try to do what society says, but sometimes you just can't agree. And right now, in these times of political unrest and polarization, sometimes it's hard. We're, you know, our, our society and our morals are being tested, I think. So you have a code of ethics. It's statements of ethical conduct from a, for the public officials. This may not be your own code of ethics, but this is for your team, finds how you should conduct yourself, and the fact that you're always representing the district, even though you may think you're not. You're not planning on representing the district when you run to the grocery store to pick up something and you're wearing your pajama pants. But anybody who sees you is going to see you as a school board member. It's important in this code of ethics that the organization's needs are put before personal needs, and sometimes you wrestle with that. And then, and adheres to high standards for everyone and honesty in dealing with your group. You have a code of ethics because you take official actions that affect lots of others. You are role models, as I said. Your, your hat's always on, and whether you want to be or not, you are role models for, for the community, not just the school, not just the staff, not just the students, but the whole community sees you in that way. They also think you've got a lot of power that you don't have individually. If you only have, and, you know, people coming up to you in, in the store, the library is saying, "Can you fix this for me?" Well, no, you can't. But you can bring the question to the group, and the group can decide, uh, defines how you're expected to carry out your responsibilities and legally required by law. So you have, you should have a copy of your code of ethics. Now, I wanted to note on here, and this is what it says in, on your, um, website, it was adopted, the most recent form was adopted in 2022. That also is when it says it was last reviewed. You may review it more often. If you do, you should see about making those changes because even if you review it and don't make changes, it's important for the community to see and for the incoming board members to see, "Oh, they looked at this last year," or "They look at this every year," and it really should be reviewed every year. So in looking at, at your board, at your code of ethics, I'm just going to go through this, have, have you, have you had a chance to review it in advance?
Yeah, I mean, I think some context here is that previous administrations throughout our entire policy book. And so we have been, over the course of the years, how many each year are we thinking on?
I mean, we've just been adopting policies. We got the initial required ones in place right before 2023, and so we've been still adding additional.
And this is...
Yeah, so five, five or more per board meeting. And so I think this is the first year where we've built enough of the policy book structure that we actually have the capacity to go back and start. And my bet is that's what you're going to have with it.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
And that's...
Just a little bit of context as to why you might see some dates differently.
I get it. And, and when I was on our board, we went through the same thing. We were really getting random policies presented to us as laws changed or things became out of date. But we had not gone through the entire policy manual, and it's important to do that, but it's important to start with the policies that actually impact you. So just real quickly, again, from our school as a whole, out within the board, individual board members, you support the superintendent doing everything on the day-to-day basis and allow them that. You follow the chain of command, and there's probably more than one within this district, even though you're not a large district. There, if, if somebody called you with an issue, it's important for you to know where to send them. So if it's an athletic issue, or a traffic issue, a disability issue, the biggest thing to remember is that you don't fix the problem and be fixed. Again, superintendent should be present at all meetings unless it involves her contract, salary, or performances under consideration. And then you can meet without her, have your discussion, and then bring her in and inform her of any changes that may happen as a result of that. Um, it's important not to undermine the authority of the superintendent. She has certain responsibilities. It's important to support those responsibilities and, and allow her to do her job. And then make sure that you're the conduit to the community. So make sure that you have the ability, when you hear something, it's like you see something, you say something, you hear something, you say something. Bring it back to superintendent. It may or may not be a concern, but if somebody in the community is talking about something, it's important for you to be able to come back and say, you know, "I know this may not be true, but there's rumor going around of X, Y, Z." And then let her figure out how to combat that or how to address that issue. It may be something that she can put out with a, um, as part of a newsletter. Community is, I hear community concerns that, blah, blah, blah. Well, here's the, here's the actual truth about this matter. But make sure she knows it and that the other board members know too, because it may be that something that Jane has heard in her community, Tracy may go, "Oh, yeah, you know, I'm hearing that as well." So, and it could be anything from, from student activities to capital issues. In Fulton, we had a, um, a conversation at one point where somebody said, "Our, our high school needs a traffic light in front of it, and it's not our responsibility. We've got to work with the city or the county to maintain that." Well, somebody else said, "You know what? We're hearing the same thing about our school." So it enabled the superintendent then to find out what the feel was throughout the entire county and then make those adjustments. Any questions so far? Okay. With strategic planning, again, you, you always want to put children first when you're looking at your strategic plan. And I know you're partway through the strategic plan, but continuing to make sure that children stay first, that the board's real touch on the strategic plan deals with your mission, vision, goals, beliefs, the beginning, the overarching theme about the strategic plan. And that you can be informed about how the strategic plan develops, you can provide input for that. But that's something, a lot of strategic plan involves the organization and the day-to-day operations of the district, and how to get to those targets that you want to see achieved, which is the superintendent's purview. Again, making sure that financially you are up to date with what's going on. If you feel like you don't know enough, it's okay to ask those questions about how is this money being spent, what was, how was the decision made to get to this point. That is not necessarily saying to the superintendent, "We need to, we need to redo the field out here." It's, you know, asking the questions so that the overarching issue reflects the district. Was that something y'all talked about? Okay, well, there you go. Um, and again, try to gather as much factual information as you can. The superintendent and the staff can help you if you have questions about things. They can pull together information that will help support you as you're looking at your strategic plan. And then make sure you're legal with all of the requirements of that. With regard to community and board relations, it's important to, to seek regular input from the community, and you have ways of doing that. And it's a two-way street because sometimes you'll push information out, sometimes you'll gather information in. That's important to know, and for the community to know, when you hold these meetings, whether it's a meeting where you're disseminating information to them, or whether it's an information gathering meeting. And you should be having some of both, or even within a single meeting, have a time for input and have a time for expression. Communicate as much as you can. Share with each other. Again, you know, if you have a community meeting, my board said, my community said this, well, my community said something totally different. How do you combine that information? With policy development, you're obviously on your way to establishing effective policies for the system, and that first pass is really a heavy lift. But once you get past that first pass, it's much easier the second time around, just like serving on the board. Your first year, there's so much information coming in, it's hard to take. But by the time you get to year two, some things start to become familiar. And the board you aren't serving, the more it gets, becomes familiar to you. Um, again, important for you not to make decisions ahead of time. It's okay to ask people's opinions. What are you thinking about? Or if there's concern, if you, you know, if you see you're at odds with somebody else from the board, call that board member and say, "You seem to be very passionate about this issue. I, I am at a loss. Can you help educate me why this is such an important thing to do?" Or, if you're passionate, express that to the others. So even if they don't agree with you, it's okay, but you've expressed your opinion, you've gotten their information, you've kept an open mind about things. And then, as you are doing, you've got, hopefully you will get into a rhythm of periodically reviewing and evaluating how effective your policies are and what things... With board meetings, it's important to come prepared. Sometimes you just can't. And if you can't, it's okay to let your board... And if you can't, it's okay to let your board chair know. I didn't have a chance to read the tribunal, or I didn't have a chance to read the packet on capital improvements. I'm going to be trying to catch up on it, but just know, I may not be active tonight in discussion because still learning. But try to be prepared. That's part of your responsibility in representing your community. Be informed and prepared to discuss issues at the table and ask questions, but asking questions in the framework of, I know you may not have the answer right now, but if you can get back to the board, I date certain, we have these issues that we need to address. Work from a standpoint that people are all trying to do what's best for students and that you're working together for things. Make sure that you work in executive session for those executive session items, and that discussion stays in executive session. And sometimes it's really tempting to go home, especially if there's been a frustrating comment or an item that you had to deal with, and turn to your partner and say, and you just wouldn't believe what happened tonight at the board meeting. And especially if it's an executive session item. And then you might be at dinner a couple of weeks later, and everybody's had a drink, and your partner inadvertently says, but, well, have you fired that person yet? Or whatever it is, it's, you never know. They don't intend, they don't operate from a bad place, but if you feel like you've got to discuss an executive session item, you've got six people around this table that you can call and say, let me just vent my frustration, or did you hear things the same way I did? Or help me understand what I might have missed with this. It's okay to rely on each other, but treat that as sacrosanct. Again, maintain confidentiality during the session, after the session. Make sure that you're looking at the interests of the school system as a whole. Here, it may not be as challenging. I know you're all elected by districts, but you've got a small enough district where you know a lot about each of the schools. So it's not like, you know, your school's getting more than my school is getting. It's easier to keep up with things. But it's important, if you feel like something's out of whack, ask the superintendent for more information and make sure that you're looking at the interests of the whole district. And again, don't do anything, don't adopt any kind of a policy in your code of ethics that keeps you from discussing those public items with the public. Make sure you feel like you can talk about actions outside of a board meeting, but that, of course, does not apply to executive session. If, you know, board members may, I mean, community members may have questions about actions you take at a board meeting, like placing the field out here. Why did you do that? It's okay to talk about that. It's not okay to privately select a vendor to come without doing a properly notice, you know, request for proposals or anything like that. And sometimes people may come to you and say, well, they weren't the lowest bid. Why did you pick them? Well, it's important for you to understand why they were chosen, and that's information you can ask staff about so that publicly people will know. And then abide by all decisions of the board. Don't, you may not choose, you know, your vote, it may not go your way, but it's important for you to support that afterwards. Again, employment personnel recommendations, you have the superintendent's recommendation. You vote that up or down. You don't say, do something else instead. Try to make sure that the superintendent assures you that the best qualified person is the person that's coming forward. And sometimes, and that evaluations are happening. Sometimes it can be a challenge. You get to the end of the year and there's so many staff to evaluate, but you rely on the superintendent to make sure those evaluations take place, and she in turn relies on her principals and department chairs to, and department staff to make sure that everybody gets that evaluation each year, including her. So it's important for you to evaluate her every year. You know, review your nepotism policy and make sure that if something comes forward, that if you feel like there's a conflict between hiring the most qualified candidate and the fact that that candidate may be related to somebody on the board, make sure that it's falling within legal requirements. And if you're unsure, ask your attorney. Financial governance, pretty simple. Don't do anything that you shouldn't be doing that would rely on personal or partisan gain as a school board member. Again, give yourself time to cover everything you need to do. Be informed about educational issues. Communicate respectfully with each other personally and privately. Don't do anything that will compromise the school district and participate in training which you're doing. And then file annually your code of ethics. So if you feel like this is sufficient, any comments or concerns about the code of ethics? If there is, let's talk about it now. If there is not, then at your next board meeting, you can say that you have reviewed the code of ethics and compliance. And I think signing it at a board meeting would probably be an appropriate thing to do. Any questions about this?
Questions about personnel? So we get the hires and folks who separated from the system, qualified or non-qualified. Is there anything else? Because I know that if you, that would have a superintendent board, like you were surprised about something in that process with them.
Yes.
And so.
Right.
I can't remember what that was.
So indicator, you get the list, tagging, it's not just in time. So in some districts, you cannot start dependent upon level until the board approves you. Indicator, that's not the case. Indicator, it is essentially, it's an information beyond the role of the superintendent. And that is, that you approve it, but it's not, if they're not approved, they don't start. And so every, for example, my former district, they both handle it differently. You know, for a teacher, you hire the teacher, the teacher starts. But if it's going to be a chief or a principal, dependent upon who, which district will handle that differently. All of that is handled very differently here. It's more, it's lagging, extremely lagging.
Like a financial report. By the time you get your financial report, that money has already been spent and it's just given to you for information. So by the time you get the personnel report, if you got a report in August, that might have been for the hires in May.
Or the hires in June.
Yeah.
Yeah. So my question is, what would be the best policy to change, adjust that or changes of that?
Well, now that I see the amount of hiring, I understand why, because you're hiring a very small amount of people in comparison to larger districts. And so that's why. One, I didn't understand it coming in, just because it was like, this seems odd. It seems like there is too much rest, it's too much lagging time. But our hires, that list, like in the hiring season, it might be two pages, but traditionally, your hire and separation list is a page, which is very small in comparison to some of the other districts. But that was one of the things I asked. I thought it was odd, but I understand that you just don't have the frequency. You don't have, you're not hiring as many people in comparison.
Every month, you're not having a personnel report with 100 people coming in that have sued or separated or gotten promoted or.
And when I say 100 plus in larger districts, it's 100 plus, which is very different than here.
I don't know if I can answer your question. Should it be that we are voting on, should we be going before the people?
What we do, we consent accretive personnel report.
Before.
Right. When the hiring takes place. Tracy?
Yeah, because I'm now confused, and I love the questions you've been asking lately because I'm learning there are things in a year and a half that I haven't.
Harmages.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Well, I guess I was just clarifying a question, because I guess the question was the part of the conversation, is that before the board.
In a more timely fashion.
Yeah, before they start working. I think that was the question.
And you can create that type of personnel policy. So in those districts, that was their policy. You specify what the authority that the superintendent had to hire from.
For, for, I should say.
For, versus what must come to the board. So, and every school system is different, so you can create that policy.
Yeah, it would require a change to your policy, but I think even in the large, there is a level, it's like a spending level. Under a certain level, the superintendent has authority to move ahead. If it's local school level, then the superintendent has an opportunity to inform the board after the contracts have been signed, that, you know, these are the people coming on board. But again, you can make it whatever you want it to be.
Yeah, because I think, Hans, you said at the beginning, the, I think, former superintendent throughout policy, right? And then you're asking, because I'm hearing before I was here.
Just to clarify, two former.
Okay.
If you want to blame the liar for that first.
Well, I mean, to me, that's water under the bridge, and we're here now, and so, you know, I think that's what I was trying to get at. It sounds like it's something the board would be deciding. And then I guess this is for our policy discussion later, then what are the other policies that maybe, well, we're going to look at the policies later, right? That's another agenda item.
But it's, but with the policy, it's fair to, and you should be asking the question, what will be the result of changing the policy? So what would be an unintended, if you did this, would it make it easier for some of their issues or would it, you know, so how much, how much are you willing to let loose and allow the superintendent to do, and how much do you want to hold tight as a board?
I think one thing, I think I asked this when I rolled on the board. I understand there's a teacher key. First of all, I understand that I am not supposed to, nor would I ever be asking for someone's evaluation, right? That's clear.
Right.
And I understand we have teacher keys and leadership keys, but I guess I have, what my role is other than, hey, Dr. Whitaker, can you assure me that everyone's been evaluated? Like, is that literally all I'm to do as a board member?
Yes, yes. And you can, you can ask the state if the, if the major city schools adheres to the teaks and leaks, these leaker keys. You can ask to see what that evaluation form looks like, not filled out, not with anybody's name on it, but you can see. But beyond that, just, you know, assurance from superintendent that legally we're following the requirements we need to, and you're making sure that everybody gets their evaluations in.
And at the end of every year, school year, I have to sign off for the, through Georgia, say to Georgia to say that they have been completed.
It's, I can't help it, it's the AP Lang teacher, and then we have a prompt and there are two parts, right? So for number two, it says insist on, they're qualified, regular and impartial. So I understand the existence of the evaluation. Is it still a matter of, hey, Dr. Whitaker, you've done the regular and impartial evaluation? And then if someone wants to look and just see what the evaluation tool looks like, not someone's actual.
Right, right.
And when, I know, we've provided the, all the tools, whether it's the J-Das, as well as the LEAKs, as well as the TEAKs, all board members, you've seen that since I've been here and since you've been here.
Yeah, no, and even, even the superintendent's evaluation, the form that you use, anybody can request to see a copy of that. They cannot see superintendent's evaluation completed, and if she is the only one who has the authority to be able to share that with anybody. And if she wanted to share that with cabinet or the principals or anybody else to say, this is what they've evaluated me on, so this is what I'm evaluating you on, and I got low marks in this area, and that trickles back to these things. So as a district, we need to do some heavy lifting in this department. So just real quickly, conflict of interest. Sometimes you have them. If you do, it's important to announce them and comply. If you know that your spouse's company's doing a request or proposal with city schools to cater to replace that field out there, then you need to recuse yourself, not just from the vote, but from any discussion around that vote. And now, you've got provisions that tell you how to deal with that. You never want to get to this point. You always want to start with a simple conversation if you feel like somebody is violating conflict of interest, and make sure that you try to encourage them to come back around. But if you should have to sanction someone, it never is good, but you've got to put a provision in place, which is a statewide provision that shows you what to do if somebody does violate the code of ethics.
The matter, like a mass question from that two thirds.
Yeah.
Is that two thirds of the remaining board members, not including the one that is under question? So like, if you all were mad at me, it would be two thirds of the.
So three of you would have to, it couldn't just be 50/50 as far as I know.
Yeah.
Yes.
Conflict of interest, I thought that was very vague. Is that just finance? Like, when I feel like conflict of interest is a form from my primary job, it's almost 100% non-financial. Like, do you have some financial stock in some, are you taking money from somebody? But this just doesn't say, like, a con, a COI could be anything.
Yeah, and really, good example, when I was on my board, one of our board members, we had a construction management company that did work for us. They managed all of our construction projects. And one of our board member's daughters graduated from Georgia Tech and got a job with them. So to be completely above board, she listed that as a conflict of interest, and then anytime there were discussions about construction management, she had to leave the room. And then she could not vote on any of the projects, which killed her because she loved construction best of all. But she managed to survive until her daughter got a new job and went someplace else. Yes.
Well, just to clarify, I feel like you could have a conflict and not know it, like, based on this, if it's not fine. So, I mean, the example, it was more of a family-based relationship conflict. But I don't know, it's, I don't, I'm not saying you have to reword this, but I was just like, I feel.
I think I can chime in on an example, because maybe there's like organizational affiliations. So before I ran, I was looking up to see, like, a state that has a union, right? From what I could tell, teachers who, states that have unions then would have to sit out when, you know, they were bargaining for salaries. I assume, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm a paying member of GAE, and for some reason, it was like a GAE thing coming before us, I probably would not be able to participate. So I'm guessing in addition of finance, there's that thing.
Affiliation.
I don't know. I mean, I think it's not listed here, but there are clearly our policies of the board. There are a set of laws around it.
Right.
And any other requirements by the state board of education. My guess is that it is actually enumerated somewhere, just not to what constitutes.
You also have policy PHA board member conflict of interest as well in place. It does primarily, it's a financial governance of the known as a will, so we can pull that through and make sure that you can reword that as well. Thank you. What else? Okay, so again, face of ethical behavior, there are a lot more words to describe, but these are some, some good guidespost to kind of think about when you're thinking about ethical behavior. Now, how will you know it when you see it? We have quickly some ethical cases that we're going to, I'm going to have you review. Let's start one at a time. So you'll read the first one and a minute to talk with your elbow partner, as Dr. King likes to say, and decide what he thinks might be appropriate. Is, Mia, I know we deal with in and out. Okay, oh, there she is. Okay, great. We'll let Mia be a part of this as well. I'm sorry I didn't bring an extra copy, but I'll give you a copy out of there. This is the first one, executive session. This is the first one, executive session. I'll give you just a few minutes. When you finish reading through it, if you will, start talking to me. I realize some of these examples may be a little exaggerated, but-
Play it, so you just want us to read one?
Read the, read the first one, and then talk with your partner about it for a minute, and then we'll share. I know. I know. And they just, the supremacy of the, um, today that's-
Now, I mean, does it even matter to you, like, are you really going to executive session? That way you can't, right?
So like, they're violating-
Yeah. And then, um-
The love, the love, the love.
And the, the love is-
There's a way to ask to read what actually smoked in the night.
Well, and even, like, personal and personnel, right? As what is smoking?
The name calling of a teacher in a whole school.
Right, so starting with, please off the agenda. Uh-
Tell me.
My total time.
I don't see.
About how much?
You're just arguing that.
And I think what just happened-
Right, 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 right.
Okay.
Okay, do what's to go first in sharing out with the group. What, what, what happened here?
If everything went off grail. It started because they violated some norms of procedures. It might not be code of ethics, but it certainly, as Tracy said, can you even do that?
Like, have an executive, you can't just, like, at the meeting, right? Be like, hey, do you want an executive session?
Yeah.
Right, and the one person says it, and, and nobody agrees to it, but they jump right in.
Wait, so I think, just to be very specific, we can choose to go into exec session as a body if we need to, not constantly.
But not the way they did.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Well, you'd have to add that as an agenda item.
Yeah, there's a, there's a series of, of Peters.
That's right.
Robert, sorry.
Peters or the order?
So just for clarification on this, so would we be following our, if our board know on that, if you wanted something added on to the agenda for executive session, you have to get two of the board members to agree to add that along?
Well, but the superintendent is the one who suggested it here, didn't he?
Let, let's start with the fact that what the superintendent wants to talk about in exec session cannot be added at the last minute in a board. Like, that is the inappropriate way to bring that matter to the-
Now, if there is an emergency, if something happened and a teacher had to be removed from a classroom, or some kind of violation that the superintendent then needed to let you know about, she might not be able to let you know what steps were going to be taken, but just the fact that this has happened, and so as, as we learn more-
Right. Other thing I've learned, um, in this position, is that there's a way to go into executive session. You can't just spontaneously, like, everybody was going to executive session, that, I think that makes the community feel like you're hiding things from them. Um, so you have to make a motion to go into executive session to say why you're going in, you don't tell them.
And you, it's planned legal personnel.
You have to say that.
And everybody votes.
You have to make a vote, and then you come back, say, not the details of what you talked about, but if you voted, if not, and what happened. That way people feel like you're just taking the privilege.
Yes.
So that's, that's from the board perspective. How about, um, the teacher wasn't notified that they were even going to be discussed? And why are you discussing teacher performance in executive session? Because that's superintendent's job. At the end result, she may report to you, but all of the details leading up to that is her, her purview.
Own tenor and manner of discussion, we, although I do want to hear you say smoke a mission. Literally, like, every way they engage on the topic, from the way that it was presented to the board, the way the board responded to it dismissively, the way that they spoke about it, how they brought other things in that were irrelevant to the conversation, raised other issues, other teachers that are irrelevant to the, it's just, it's all on.
Or remember talking to the teacher about it ahead of time, and then already knowing that a lawsuit was out there and ready to go. So, good job, all right? The next one is superintendent vote. So read over that for a minute. Maybe a small enough group to where we could just have the general discussion. Oh, that's all I have left?
You've got questions.
Okay, yeah, so, so what are your thoughts on, on the superintendent vote here?
Board can't do that, right?
Correct. This is a special call meeting, so if you have a special call meeting, that's the only topic you can do. And-
What the board want?
Right. You have to have, legally, you have to have superintendent. And, um, first-
Manner of community.
Yeah, and this is in a public venue, too, with TV cameras in place.
Well, I do have a question. So like, and I think it's to the norm of, like, agenda items are votes. So, you know, here, because I only called enough people to get a majority vote, right? Hans, you were asking about the two thirds earlier and that number. And so, am I correct in saying that sometimes, and it may be a matter of time, if, because it is your responsibility as a board chair, right?
Yes.
To find out if people want something put on, or if, so then in that case, then is your first call to Hans, because he's the vice chair? And then the second call, James or Janet, since I'm the newest member, I thought I was at the bottom of the phone call list.
No, I, it's, I don't need to speak out of turn. Go ahead.
If I, I want a, I, I, if I, if I wanted an agenda item added?
No, in the event that there is a need to have board members vote on including an agenda item or something, right? Not during a meeting, right? But when we're deciding on something, and we need the majority, right? So again, I don't want to confuse anyone. I'm not talking about an actual vote that we have in public, but, you know, per our norms, if there's a-
Have to be a general setting, Tom, there's somebody who wants to add something to the agenda.
Sure, I don't, I don't call on any order. A lot of times, um, I, as I'm on my way home from work, so I just go in whatever order. I see you in my phone, and some people pick up immediately, and then some people don't, and I circle back again, and I go back to the top, so that there's no, it's not be something urgent.
I can imagine the only reason in my mind why there might be a specific order is if the item falls within a level of expertise or purview of a specific board member. So not seniority based, but like-
Or perhaps in their district, something occurred in their-
Yeah.
But community, there hasn't been an order.
Yeah.
No, no. Usually, I just go in whatever particular order you're lined up in my phone. Sometimes, like, I feel like I can get James pretty much on the first ring, and then sometimes I can get, sometimes it takes a couple more tries to get other people, and then I just go back and circle.
Well, if it's, again, if there's a sense of urgency, you may call the vice chair and say, I've only got time to call one person, you call two people, and then you just, it's typically not a-
The other thing to be explicit about in this, because I thought this is where your question was going, Tracy, was, was we do, I don't remember where it is, but, but specifically we curb the idea of polling, right? We, we don't want to, that, you know, I only called enough people to get the majority vote, I'm not calling, yeah, like, that concept of pre-rigging a vote, like, that's a, that's a, that is a violation of law.
Well, no, I didn't mean pre-rigging, just practically speaking, depending on where the, the chair or the vice chair falls, if you call one person, and it's an agreement, and then you call the third person, well, now you have a majority.
Yeah, but it's, I'm, I mean more, so if you want to have something added to the agenda, and you've got enough people to support adding it to the agenda, that's one. To say, I'm going to have a conversation about what the item is to arrange the vote?
Oh, no, 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 yes.
I'm going to only have a conversation, yeah, that's a, that's a new-
Dr. Whitaker.
And I, I will just add, this is not in this, but typically, um, as a superintendent, I call the chair and vice chair first, and then the remaining members of the board, as with Dr. Salton, in the order of the phone. And, and also, Ms. Anderson, understanding that getting you in the middle of the day sometimes can be more of a challenge, but I just, I wanted to say that, that's just, that's just, but in the order of the phone, literally, is alphabetical order, because when I first got the phone, that was, that was where it was.
And so, I also just want to make sure we don't use two different issues. So if the agenda is already set before the, even if it's not, and James wants to add an issue or he has a question about something he wants to clarify, then, or he already has support to add an agenda item, then that usually comes in, and then I, that's the only vote, and I'll call each one of the members and inform you, we're going to add this to the agenda, or have it back. No, but if for some reason you had a topic you wanted to add, like AP boards, add it to the, whatever, then I think what I was reading here was, or this is what I was like, and this is a little interesting, is once you have the support you need, so maybe you call Hans, and he says, yes, add it, James says, yes, add it, add it, then probably should still call Janet and let her know, you know, this is what I'm thinking, because it's supposed to be a meeting and being clarified.
You're exactly right. That nothing is worse, nothing feels worse than walking into a board meeting and sitting down, and something comes up for discussion, and it's very obvious that everybody else knew about something except you, or you and one other person. So even if you know it's going to be a fight, calling me to let me know about replacing that deal, because I don't want to do it, you owe me the courtesy and respect of a fellow's board member to, I'm going to say, I know that you're not as supportive of this, but I need to let you know that I am bringing this forward. And, you know, I'm, if you can support it, that's wonderful, I respect. If you cannot support it, but I wanted to make sure you were at least in support. That alone will carry a lot of weight with it. And am I out of time?
Yes.
Okay, so, so you're, you're, we will continue these studies later on, but you've, so you've got previews to some of these other thoughts and ideas, but the important thing with ethics is that you, again, you treat everybody respectfully, I'm just going to keep going through, there's lots of fun topics to read about here, you can come to your own conclusions, that was fun, this was also fun. Um, but, um, reminding you again, you set the tone for everybody, and your behavior and your mutual respect for each other can help support everyone. Um, I have my typical evaluation form to fill out. I've also got a little handout on, um, how to recognize an ethical leader, so I will share that information, I'll leave it all with Dr. Whitaker. And I'm going to stick around for a little while, so, um, if you have any-
You can send you that one.
Thank you, this is always fun. The dialogue is very funny.
He's the one who called the kid for him. Call everybody stupid.
In disrespect.
Who he yelled at when that- This guy's out of control. We will talk.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did.
Which is, what, I mean-
Yeah, no, I did. We are.
For during your part, yeah.
And for-
Uh, the Travis system. No, I don't think, I don't think it's the time for that, but you have the time. Okay, excellent. And we have it online. Hello, Marie.
Good, good, how are y'all?
See you. We have one board member that, um, her-
What year did Talia-
So, board, we have Mr. Wilson, CEO of Education Planner, and he is going to provide a presentation for you all.
Well, it was good meeting you last week. Glad to be back with you today. So, put this PowerPoint together mainly for the opportunity for us to have a discussion. And a lot of what Education Planners does, when a form that, I think I even shared this with you, I think, about fifteen years ago, it was all about trying to work with school districts so they can be efficiency and effectiveness. Yeah, and then, and then we added on to that, saying that while you work together with your community, it would always be good to have a positive public awareness to it, which kind of fits some of the challenges that you have today. So, as you see, it starts saying on the very first slide, organizational efficiency and effectiveness study. So it gives us an opportunity to think about, try to make sure that as you go through your processes, you make sure you cover all your bases. So the second slide, which is an important one, too, because it hits with a very important purpose, as you go through these kinds of things, you should use as much data that is accurate, that you rely on, so you're just not per se- These are just four samples, information that you've retrieved in your work prior to or currently. The example of the very first one in the left-hand corner, you've got a demographic increase or decrease in your population, also a five-year and a 10-year plan. And demographers will always do five- and 10-year planning. The important part of that is that you've had an outside source look at it, they have certain particulars that they use to try to, to improve on the data. Also important that you review it every year, because things can change. But these are some of the data points that we'll be talking about today. Again, we didn't just make some of this stuff up, we really tried to research and look for what you've already been accustomed to, already looked at. Department of Ed, you obviously have information that comes to you every year for that. Same thing with the census data, and then yourself, and what you do. So I'll refer-
Hold on one second. Can you put that up in PowerPoint and not in slides?
It's, it's, when I merge it with the left.
It is, because it's sitting in the GSBA template, and it, yeah.
You hold on, you hold that.
We can just talk.
The information's here in front of us.
Yeah, yeah, we're good. Yeah, so the, so the next slide, and you'll see several like this that refers to that second slide. So we always take a look at the US Census, conducted every 10 years, but it's also added on to and worked on every year during that time. That the Decaters population has decreased since the 2020 census, is currently declining, and that the 50-plus age group has increased over 40% since 2010. So all of this is, I want us to learn more about where you are today. We use data sources for that, and this is just a good example. And it tells you in that bottom part, currently 71% of the households in Decatur do not have children. And of the households that do have children, 69% are enrolled in public schools. This slide is important for a lot of reasons. As I am Baldris trained and part of my team is Lean Six Sigma trained, and we always look at an education perspective and a business perspective, we look at business processes. We look at, we try to go backwards first, find out where we are today. Then we try to forecast where we need to go so we make good decisions. This is an example of that. This is just simply a 10-year history of your population. And you can see, this was in the ARC article that just came out, the ARC was talking about metro Atlanta. They were using 10 districts, but the ARC actually supports 11 counties. In metro districts that they were talking about, all were basically showing some declines in enrollment. They mentioned Beaufort County and City, City of Decatur, Beaufort City, City of Decatur, sorry. That several years ago, you were a growing district, Beaufort was too. But now both districts are beginning to show some decline. And some of that just simply is that the population in Atlanta is getting older and the population is beginning to move further and further out. Someone like myself and probably many of you who've lived in Atlanta for over 50 years, you saw this. We saw where we live, more population moving. And 40 years ago, I would have never moved where I live today because I thought it was in the country. But I just went out with everybody else. So populations have changed, your enrollment has changed. Your enrollment does not show that you're going to increase. You're going to potentially continue to decline a little bit. So it's important that you look at the options that you need to think about as to whether or not, as far as closing the schools, adding on to existing schools, or those kind of things need to be talked about because this indicator is showing that you are declining and will continue to decline. Part of what we do is to take a look at your 10-year enrollment and your current enrollment. This is the October FTE account for this past school year. The October FTE account for this past school year, it's every school and it shows you the numbers of every grade. And that helps to be a potential indicator as to where you need to go. And you'll see populations at several of your elementary schools have been in decline and they're beginning to be small enrollment. Something to look at. It's a trend. You need to forecast and look at all of the factors that have, that have come with that so you'll eventually be able to make good decisions. In part of this efficiency and effectiveness study, we're going to recommend to you a lot of things. And one of them is to establish a timeline to make sure that all of the potential factors are looked at so you just don't make those decisions very quickly without all of the research, or at least researching is through the process. Important that you look at all the factors. It's important that you have a communication plan, working with the superintendent and administration to be able to support and help that process. We always look at enrollment, forecasting, short range, long range, future operational costs are important. And so many factors that need to be looked at.
I'll keep that.
The welcome, I think.
Yeah. So I just, I just so that we're completely clear, when we say 200, uh, when we say 2019, was Tally fully up and running with the full third grade contingent in that year? I just want to make sure we're talking about apples to apples and we're not picking up a shift, right? Because the under, the lower elementaries lost 25% of their students by moving through. Three, four, five, right? I just want to make sure that we're, that, that there is an apples to apples there.
Can I ask, what, I'm, which data point are you looking at that concerns you that not including or?
So like difference between 2019 FTE and 2024 FTE, that's 504. So, so are we certain that the difference between the K to three versus? Do, but this is one indicative slide, but in all of the slides, I'm, I'm sort of asking this back. We moved an entire grade from lower elementary into upper elementary. And so when we say that lower elementary has experienced a substantial reduction in the number of students, I want to make sure that we are only talking about grade-to-grade population decline, reduction in students. Not 25% of the kids that were in lower elementary actually got moved into upper elementary because we changed the way we call lower elementary and upper elementary.
Your thing is when Tally was brought about for FAB or Four Five Academy was Four Five Academy.
Yes.
And it had 900 children. So in order to, to relieve FAB, Tally was built and there was a redistribution.
Correct.
Of all the students. I think probably the, the next slide, not necessarily this one, but the next one kind of speaks to just true grade distribution by cohort, by year. And it was.
Here is the, this is why I ask, and when I'm looking at that, this slide right here, right?
The one 2019.
Saying that, for example, kindergarten has 188 fewer children coming into kindergarten. And when I add the current, so there's 256 kids going into kindergarten in 2024. In 2019, there were 256 plus 188, whatever that number is, 400 some children. Is that, that's the right way to interpret those numbers? So, so we should be very clear, there's a couple of things happening, right? We're, we're seeing, you know, that's a 40-ish percent reduction in the number of kids going into kindergarten. Like it's giant. So it's, it's not when we say a half a percent reduction per year. It's a very uneven distribution of that reduction. The bulk of that reduction is happening. Not just that we moved a third grade out. It's that we have almost 50% fewer kids enrolling in the lower elementary.
And we get our numbers, it's from state October FTE. So all of our numbers, while we may have done some math, came from October 2019 FTE. Everything that we put up there, put a slide together, it is research-based, based on information that's accessible to us. So while this slide looks different, those counts came from official October FTE.
Can I just follow up on that? So, because I, I hear what you say. If you add 501 and, or 503 and 251, you get 754. That's the reduction in pre-K through five that you're. You want to make sure, Hans, if I'm hearing you correctly, that that 503 is accurate to the grade levels and not reflective of the fact that those second graders, or rather those third graders went somewhere else. But then I'm hearing you saying, and I'm looking, when you look at FTE, the numbers are the numbers. Yeah.
There is, there is a double whammy hitting our lower elementary, is what we're saying. Five lower elementary schools that used to serve 500 more students plus an entire grade. Now they serve an entire grade less, which is 250 or so students, plus an additional 500 students that are no longer enrolled. That is why our lower elementaries feel empty in some cases.
I think you can, I think it's, like you said, it's easier to see that trend if you're trying to dig into the smaller kids on that next slide. Then you can just look at the kindergarten forward and follow it in 2012 to 2024. And you'll see that you had 300, you were in the 300, you had a bump, probably abandoned into the 400, and now you're down. So you take that factor of Tally out of it, that shows you exactly who's circulating, like starting that, that key.
So the information, thank you. So the information we share, again, is fact-based. And as you move forward, you take a look at information we share, then you have to really realize, okay, how much of this and how do I want to share it to make sure the community understands, because it can be a little bit difficult to understand or whatnot. And that's why when we present stuff, we try really hard to present factual information that we can back up. So this slide is one that really does tell story. We're pretty always wanting to tell the story that I think is accurate. And so if you look in the bottom left-hand corner of this slide, starting at 2012, you go from 2012 up to 2019 per se. You can look at the first grade and see that number. And if you walk all the way over to the 12th grade, you'll see that the first grade had more students than 12 years later. If you go a little bit further, you'll see from 2021, and that's what this slide is saying, for the first time, the incoming kindergarten class is smaller than your graduating, which is an indicator to us as demographers and whatnot, that you're not growing. You're going to continue this trend, and if you continue this trend, you'll have a decline in your enrollment. And you didn't used to do that. And the article that I mentioned a few minutes ago from the ARC, they say that. This is all that's pulled from them. They say that in the enrollment, the City of, City of Decatur Schools is a member of the ARC. And it says that city schools of Decatur and Beaufort City saw a really dramatic growth 15 years ago or so. But now, like most every other metro district, they are in decline. They mentioned Atlanta Public Schools, and I think the last time we talked, I mentioned that they were on the news not too long ago about, as they were calling it, empty seats. So Atlanta Public Schools had more than 21% of their students in 1995 than they did in 2010. So they are in decline. For whatever the reason is, as you try to forecast your future, you have to look and see that. So all of them always look back, see where they were a few years ago. And then they start predicting how you're going to move forward. So that, every one of these slides will show you something in the past and something in the present and working towards the future. And this is, and the way we put this slide together is in 2021, that flipped. So in kindergarten, you have, you had 321 kindergartners in 2021 and you had 415 seniors. So your kindergarten classes are now, for the first time, starting in 2021, smaller than your graduating. And, and there's a, a much more detail that you can do that is you take 12 years ago, your kindergartners, and you follow them through each grade to see if you maintain them, where were you losing them? Was it after third grade testing or whatever the case may be? So it's a good way to determine. This is just simply a slide that's pretty clear. A little complicated at first look, but it's pretty clear.
So, Dr. Wintaker, what you're saying, that's a good question. So this year's seniors, 2024, were kindergartners in 2012, right?
Yeah.
I was tra- tracing them. So 12 years ago, we had 369 kindergartners that turned into 456 seniors. So it did go up as they attended Decatur, but the biggest jumps happening in ninth grade and like sixth grade as well. Is that a trend that you would expect to see repeat itself? Do the classes grow as they hang out or?
Done this in a lot of districts, and each district is different. But it's a real telling slide when we put that together to start at 2012, follow them.
It's a diagonal, yeah. And they do, they, you're right, they do all look like they grow over time. They do all grow over time. The jump between eighth and ninth, and this is something we use in the data, does look like it's going down. Looks like we used to average about 40 new ninth graders. We've gotten to where we're averaging half of that.
So, so there's a deeper dive into all of this and you'll find, you'll find particulars between eighth grade and ninth grade. There, there might be something that's causing that. I, I mentioned third grade testing and I'm not on the testing level now anymore. But a lot of times, certain testing and, and then of course also, which is happening all over metro, it is affordability, housing. I was in my twenties and had kids, couldn't afford the house that I live in today. So usually you'll see a lot of districts that will actually grow, and you're one of them, that, like your high school is full, it's doing very well, middle school is full. But can people afford to live in City of Decatur when they're 20-something years old and have a kindergarten child type? So there's so many factors that create this. But this is a slide that can, you can talk on for an hour. Because the good part, and we've kind of gotten into this, is trying to take from 2012, follow them in the first grade, follow them in the second grade, and just see what your enrollment is. You'll find where you're growing, and it probably goes back to potentially a neighborhood that was new to the district. So homes that were affordable for young families and stuff. There's all kinds of indicators, but they're good indicators.
I'm just curious if this will be included in this or if it's a factor. But I, I don't know why I keep remembering, we have like 100 more courtesy students this year.
It would be captured in there. We don't, I don't think it's that, it would be captured in the FTE enrollment because it's counting more months.
Okay, so it, is that a factor? Like I know that you had a page earlier that identified 71%. So basically 29% of the households in Decatur have children, right? And then 69% of those 21, 29% are sending their children to Decatur. I don't even know what those numbers look like. So I just wondered, you know, that makes sense, right? There are fewer houses with children. There are going to be fewer children in the schools. But then if courtesy tuition is a factor for enrollment, I just wondered how that looked.
So, so our belief is that as you get ready to go to your community and you have community conversations, and we're certainly recommending that for you, these are the type of things that you, we would dig, dig a deeper dive in. So if that question was asked to you, we would be able to answer that.
Actually, can I ask one other thing? And I'm not sure if this is relevant, so you can tell me it's not relevant right now. Did I hear there was like a bump between eighth and ninth grade?
Isn't that it?
Yes. Isn't there typically a switch where kids want to be on sports teams and such? So they might transition from a private school that doesn't have those sports teams to a high school that does?
There are several factors that can cause your eighth grade and your ninth grade to look different.
Just to be clear, we saw moderate to large bumps between every class every year for a number of years until it looks like 2019, 2020, when the pandemic hit, right? And that's really when the bump between eighth and ninth grade stopped. But every year, you see that bump kind of end in the 2019.
Most, every district in metro experiences the same thing. We're still trying to figure out, why did we lose kids after the pandemic? Every, every school district lost kids in 2020 and we blamed it on the pandemic. They all didn't come back type thing. So that's, that's a real thing. Hopefully it'll never happen again. But demographers are trying to figure that out too. So I think families chose to do other things, whether it's homeschool or whatever it could be. But, but these are, these are slides that you can talk on all day long because they're interesting. And you can talk eighth, ninth grade, and there's a legitimate conversation with that. And sometimes the ninth grade is a little larger than the 10th grade because if you look at the credits they earned, might have stayed a little longer in the ninth grade type thing. So there's so many particular. So there's so many particulars that go with this.
The main takeaway that I'm getting is we have a long-term, demographically based, apparently irreversible trend towards declination, particularly in the lower elementaries that currently have us at a relatively massive amount of overcapacity within our K-two schools.
And you're still holding very strong in middle.
Yep.
That's what we're. And since we've implemented a re-implemented paid tuition, is that a factor at all in terms of projections?
No, um, what I will say is our projections, we are higher this year in our project, we have higher number of one body count than the projection we received. So Wolfert said we would be at one number, we actually have more children here than what Wolfert projected for us. Um, remember for tuition, tuition was more of, to Mr. Wilson's point, an empty seat. So instead of it being empty, it would have a body in it. Um, for October F T E, they will be included, but it's not like you will say, this is courtesy tuition, this is paid tuition, this is, like, you don't, you know, F T E is just, it's a student who is receiving instruction by someone employed by the school.
Just to, just to put the tuition question into perspective, we have less than a hundred, is it across the entire system?
And it's only, and it's only in the K-five, so it's not going to impact.
In order for it to even remotely impact these numbers, we would be talking about a hundred students per grade tuition before we were having anything like a capacity question.
But the other balance to that, which we talked about with tuition paying students, is what it has to do with overhead costs, staff, that sort of thing, you know, like, are you, you know, with your current staffing model, wanted to add a hundred students per grade, what would that do to how many teachers you have in the library?
Then you would need, yes, you don't want to tip, tip it so that you need to add a teacher, because then it's going to work in the reverse. This is, the seat was there, it was open, the air conditioning was, was running, the lights are on, the body is there. Why not, meaning the teacher, why not put a student in that?
Yep.
That's just good business. So this slide here, again, is an example of where we found this, per se. We went to the Georgia D O E, we pulled formulas that they use. You don't have to use those formulas, but using their formulas, just so it's research-based, you will see that these numbers show that in your K-three, your student capacity, one thing, building utilization is another thing. And based on student capacity and classrooms, they match up through a formula, that's all it is. You don't have to follow it, even though it's recommended, but it, but it's research-based. So this is a sample of a slide literally I pulled from.
So just based on Georgia D O E's calculations or recommendation, then that's saying Claremont could have six more classrooms being used, and Glenwood could have six more classrooms being used, and Wolfert could have nine more classrooms.
Let me answer it a different way, from, from the state formula. The state formula says if you have three hundred and sixty-five students, you should have seventeen classrooms. It's, it's, it's just a formula. But then, but with that simplification that I use, it, it answers what you said, that there's, there's nine available classrooms, per se. Now, this formula doesn't calculate for special needs classrooms or things like that, it's strictly a bunch.
Anything like that? So I remember Glenwood with three hundred kids in it, and it was absolutely exploding at the seat. So you mean, this is probably a little aggressive, but even if it's a, you know, twenty percent higher, it, it still shows that we have a, a massive amount of underutilization.
I also think this, maybe this won't come out right now, but I do think we owe it to the community to be clear about what that space is being shared for. We are talking about expansion and work on the system. So if it looks like one school is at thirty-nine percent utilization, um, maybe it's not all classrooms, maybe you are using some less space for languages and whatever. But I do think it's, it's reasonable station point to state what that space is being shared for.
That is a real good point. And a district that did this for this past year, they were declining enrollment in the elementary schools. So I sent a team out to every elementary school. They walked every classroom to determine what was in that classroom. Because formulas like the state uses, they're, they're thinking every classroom has X number of kids. And so when, so it was a real big difference in discussion once you knew exactly what was in those classrooms. There were special needs, gifted classes, you name it, that caused that room to maybe only have eight children. And so of the, of all of these elementary schools that we looked at, and it was a large district, eighty percent of them were at capacity. But by base numbers, they weren't. We were showing empty seats in many of them. So the good part was, we learned a lot from the principal and the teachers, how they were using their school, and they were using it very effectively. We didn't have four teacher bounties and things like that existing because it was space. So it, it's just another, as I started this, saying, everything that we try to provide for discussion is fact-based. And I can back that up, even though it doesn't go as deep as we might want to go, I didn't make this up, pulled it right from the documents that I have with the D O E.
And to your point, Dr. Fulton, there are a lot of other programs in our K-two schools that are not necessarily a part of the traditional Georgia Department of Education of funding formula for evening class.
You're, you're absolutely right, and the formulas are just good as a starting point.
Yep.
And, and always you put yourself in a position to defend yourself by saying. That's the reason we went further in that other district, so we knew exactly what was in every single classroom. Based on demographic study that you did, methodology that was used, this is their forecast. See that they're saying in twenty-four, twenty-five, at five thousand two hundred and nineteen students, and they're forecasting ten years later, you'll have a lesson number, as I mentioned earlier. While all of that is good, you really need to review that every year. Demographers will give you one for every year, but they basically are looking at five and ten years out. You don't want to live on a document like this that, oh, well, in ten years, we'll look at it.
The takeaway for the community here, though, is in five years, we will likely be in the range of where we were ten years ago.
Basically, it, as you can see, they're projecting that you're going to decline. Recommended next year. I don't think this point might be the updated version.
Okay.
I can talk from it.
Yeah, you can talk from it, they have it in front of them.
Well.
The, the next slide should be early learning in.
Oh, be the.
Yes.
Yeah.
And what we wanted to show you there is, as you have further and further discussions, it's important to know about your waitlist and that it exists. You can see that you have a waitlist in both facilities, and that's important to know if you're going to try to move forward and serve all children.
So I, I think a little bit more detail is going to be necessary to talk about, right? So are, are, I think the waitlist that we have at College Heights and the Fraser Center are the smallest indicator of demand for early childhood education within this school system, right? If you, if you do, there is roughly the same size student cohort in each age range. Like, we're looking at two hundred to three hundred students in each grade range. That same need exists from zero to four as it does in K-two, right? So it's, it's not a waitlist of forty-six kids. There are twelve hundred children that are age zero to four, that, that, of which we're serving maybe two hundred, or maybe two fifty when you add these two centers together. And so, and so I think that there is a demographic analysis on how many children are there in Decatur ages zero to four that need these kinds of services that we're talking about providing, that are now currently doing, you know, full tuition in other programs or in other areas within.
So, good point. And today, we're trying to share with you a lot of information, and then part of your role in this would be determining, okay, how much of this did we, the Wilson A. share? Do we want to keep as it is, or do we want to improve upon the slot? So this is introducing all of these type of things that research-based will tell you. And you've got to make sure down the road how you communicate that with your.
Let, let me say it this way, so that we're clear on the communication with the community, because there is a lot of concern in the community, justifiable. If you're looking at a significant reduction in student enrollment, why is it necessary to build a school, right? And, and that is because, I think the answer lies in the fact that we have five K-two schools serving seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred children, and we have one childhood, early childhood learning center serving twelve hundred and fifty children. We have an imbalance in our infrastructure with where the kids are versus what is needed.
I'm sorry, I need to know where that number you keep citing about the twelve hundred children, where are you getting that?
I'm, I'm, uh, what's it called, regressing the curve on the population in each age cohort. So if you look at each age cohort on the previous slide.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're doing. I think what I'm asking is, do we, I, I appreciate your kind of extrapolating, because it sounds like that's what you're doing. I want to know where the actual numbers are, because what I'm trying to do is reconcile the twenty-nine percent of households indicator that have children. So the majority of households right now just don't even have children.
I was shocked by that.
And then, looking even, it, it sounds like you're putting a lot of information in there that may be correct, but I want the numbers there versus.
That's what I.
Just saying there are twelve hundred kids that were not served.
That's exactly why I said we need, so what I don't want to do is have precision interfere with accuracy. But there is a way to do the demographic study to find out the exact number. It's going to be about twelve hundred, but the exact number, because I know the community will want to see it, needs to be uncovered. There is going to be some number of zero to four age children indicator that's on the order of twelve hundred, we need to know what that is. Because that's one of the core justifications for this need, is the fact that we have one school, uh, one and a half schools, basically, center, serving roughly twelve hundred children, and we have five schools serving roughly eight hundred children. And that, that's the core of the case, one of the core of the cases for why we need to rebalance where we have schools.
You always want to put yourself in a position.
Yes.
And then, can I just, I'm confused here, for College Heights, there are no three-year-olds on the waitlist.
As of yesterday.
So, but I'm looking at the page, not on the slide, but it's in our package here. So all the other groups have a waitlist. So I, I realize, I, I think what you're doing, Mr. Wilson, right, is presenting us the factual information.
That's right.
And then I guess the question I have is, what accounts for that? Every other age group, you know, instance, we have forty-six on the waitlist, one-year-olds thirty-six, two-year-olds twenty-five, and then we get to three and pre-K, no one's waiting.
I don't know, as a, as a parent of a three-year-old, I would surmise that if I could afford a College Heights, and I, and I have a point of privilege of being able to support College Heights, if I had gotten to stage three, I'd have to go somewhere else.
Yep.
There's no way that I could sat on the waitlist for three years. And we sat on the waitlist at College Heights for two years, and, but there's no way that you could, I'm sure by the time kids get to that point, if they can't afford a full-paid E C L C, which College Heights is a hundred percent pay, there's no getting around it, you're paying out of pocket. Odds are, I would imagine, they've walked off and just somewhere else.
And, and, and know that the waitlist changes daily. So it's, College Heights is running a rate, a waitlist today is a hundred and seven, tomorrow, College Heights waitlist could be a hundred and ten.
Right.
And then it could be a hundred and fifteen, and then it could go back down to a hundred and five. It, it depends upon the need.
Yeah, I understand that, and then, but pre-K, am I correct, is still a different option? So if you're a parent, like, when my daughter went to College Heights, yeah, we were on the waitlist, too. But by the time we got to pre-K, I thought you were talking about a totally different financial scenario.
You are, you're talking, you're talking about at the faculty already. So you, you don't create a waitlist typically for what would be pre-K, because that's something that is funded in a completely different.
Then I guess, maybe this is a separate question, because I don't think you have this data, but, you know, Hans, you keep referencing this twelve hundred. So are we doing anything with the trackability of the children that are on the waitlist to see where they are being served as well as what is happening if it turns out to your point that now they've gone somewhere else? So at this point, do we do anything trackability-wise, other than know that we have a waitlist that may be one or two more, or yesterday?
We have a waitlist. We, you know, College Heights does not have an enormous amount of staff to stay in touch with a hundred people across the, that's not, they're, they're serving the children who are on mobile.
We, we do know, or at least I think we know, that the number of kids that we have identified within D H A that are of an age to access these programs are not actually in the program. Which is the other case for why the E C L C is necessary. Not only are there roughly twelve hundred kids across Decatur that need some of these services, of which we can serve two hundred and fifty, but there is a cohort of roughly sixty kids a year that need these services within D H A that have no access to it. They cannot afford the full price programs, and they can't actually get to the programs even if they weren't full.
I think the other thing, too, from looking at the slides here, is, and whatever I talked about, what I wanted to say, we did also think creatively about space utilization with the districts here. All of your elementary schools have space. What they're being used for, I don't know, because I don't work there or live there, but there is, some, all of those schools are not at a hundred percent space utilization, or so it appears just by looking at that slide. You also have, at College Heights, you have a hundred and seventeen kids sitting on a waitlist, some of them, those two-year-olds, I bet you, some of them have been sitting on that waitlist since they were in the district. So, you know, what do we do to make sure that we're making good use of those children's time, and they're not just sitting on the waitlist? Um, you know, as we, in time, start planning for this capital improvement, you're talking about how all of this space could be maximized while we're being good stewards of taxpayer dollars, because there is space, but we need to make sure that we're using it creatively. It doesn't necessarily mean that you have to build something, but maybe do. You know, we talked about moving pre-K, we talked about reusing office space, but it does look like there is spaces in the district. But I think we need to really look at how we're using it creatively, so that you can not only be available for all children, but get that waitlist down quickly. Otherwise, we're going to end up with another school with a whole other waitlist, and that's not the goal. But I want to understand, is it, are these students that wait?
But, I want to understand, is it, are these students that wait on the waitlist, we should do something with them and their other spaces?
No, not necessarily. I think we need to take what data he's given us and look at some of those elementary schools that are not at full, that are not using their spaces creatively, or not using that as complete utilization, and see what they're using that space for. I think some of, the other point that we talked about was office space, so could some of those classrooms be repurposed for office space? Could some people move around so you could maximize educational space? Could pre-K move into the, pre-K move back into their home schools, and then you could free up classroom space, or get college heights out of those trailers and cut down on that cost? I think all of those options should be considered, so that you get that waitlist down, but also maximize whatever space you already have in existence, so that it's utilizable. Those are all, it's a both and, not an either or.
Yeah. Because even if we build the early childhood learning center and use it to its maximum capacity, the combination of the ECLC and college heights is still, at best, going to serve less than half of the total need for zero to four support within the district. And, and I don't think it's our objective to say, we're going to do all, 100% of all kids in the district, but if we're able to better utilize space across all of our schools, or all of our footprint, how many more of those 1,200 kids that we aren't able to get to are we?
Actually, you don't want to build a center that's built for 100, 150 students, and then you end up with another 50-person waitlist potentially, because we haven't looked at every single inch of space we have and used it.
Okay. So, our enrollment numbers are declining, and the number of households with children, so this 1,200, Hans, are you citing this as a static number, so that?
Of course not.
Okay, because then, what I'm trying to figure out is, then, I think you talked about, like, Hans, you started with, hey, let's be clear about in five years, what this is going to look like. So, then, what is that going to look like in five years, when the 1,200 students you're talking about grow up?
All these ones with 12, they'll take the most pessimistic number, which is 3,500 total students, K through 12.
Right.
So, that's way, way down. Divide that by 12, you get a round number. Those kids are going to exist from birth to four as well. That's a round 1,200. If the population's going up, then it would be more. If it's going down, it's going left. I think 1,200 is overly conservative, because that number doesn't include all of the kids who don't attend college heights, who do apply, who are the McKinsey Hernans, who is mine, I've heard, who was 72nd on the waitlist for pre-K for her year, and then we ended up having to go into a private school and strongly considered staying, because, oh my God, it was the greatest place on earth. So, the 1,200 is just math. It's, it's very pessimistic math about how many kids will exist in Decatur.
Yeah.
Ten-year newborns. We can do a least number, it's going to fluctuate around that 1,200 number, so the absolute smallest you could probably mathematically see it getting to is still 900 kids, right? But the fact of the matter is, we're not going to go to no kids in that age range. And in any scenario, no matter what we build, in the capacity for the maximum amount of those children, for any projected population impact that we're looking at.
That makes sense, but I think, to your anecdote about the waitlist in mind, we may be at that peak when everyone moved here. So, I'm not sure it's entirely reasonable to be citing our experiences with waitlists that were at the peak of enrollment and visibility here, am I wrong?
No, if we want to ban personal anecdotes, consider both.
No, I don't want to ban personal anecdotes, I'm just saying that you and I have an experience that's maybe not reflective of today, based on the numbers we've given.
No, that is just an anecdote, that there's a whole lot of students that aren't served by college heights, and there's an industry of pre-K searches, private schools, et cetera, that exist to serve there. And then, we have the data that we've done. I've actually had Esther walk through, like, how good are our college heights students doing as we go through? It's like, man, they're killing it.
I love that, we can do that.
Yeah, you have it. It's on the, it's on the packet, you can control for kids of interest in college heights.
You mean on the dashboard?
Yeah, the dashboard.
Oh, cool, okay.
You can control for college heights and go back and how well they've done versus the other cohorts.
Okay.
And every time my daughter's graded, not 100, I'm like, God, she didn't get into college better. Those are all anecdotes. I didn't realize that excuse was available to me, but I'm going to use it now.
Oh, boy, oh, boy.
That's just where the 1,200 is. Yeah, but again, I really don't want to, accuracy and precision are two different things, and I am not talking about.
Okay. I just wanted to also say, the Fraser Center serves, for the most part, staffed children. Now, staff, meaning teachers, I mean, it, it is a recruitment and a retention tool in an industry where the majority of the industry is female. And I just want that to be said, because most, when I tell people we have it, it's really something that people are like, wow. So, if I come to work, I could potentially, especially when they're younger, and those ages, child kids come there, and then I could go to work, I mean, from, yeah, many staff. Mr. Wilson, I'm sorry.
To the next slide. Point 12 taken up. I think that this is an important slide, because it's putting it in steps. You need to address the demand. You also need to make sure that your demand is being met to the point where you can close the achievement. If you have a waitlist.
Can we reverse the order of these? Because I do very much feel like the second one is the one that's more critical.
Maybe about one minute.
Okay.
But it's an important slide, because you're trying to serve, and you're trying to make sure that children are ready for something. We try to cover any potential that you have, so you see those, just that we're listed. But it's important to us, as we do this for you, that every voice is heard, every data point is considered, so we're, you know, the group's represented, your knowledge base, based on trying to learn, whether it's with me or anyone for that matter, so good decisions are always made. You've got community engagement meetings coming up, and slide after this, we'll talk in more detail with that. You see, you've got one August 27th, you've got one September the 15th. We are going to work with you to create you a timeline. So, parents, community members cannot come out and say, they didn't listen to me, didn't go to a meeting because they didn't know about it, it's telling me I'm going long. So, recommended next steps. Well, I've got this slide and one for this, to be open for more questions. So, we are a strong believer in, in education planners, that you create a positive public awareness, that when you make the decision, whatever the decision you make, you cannot have, you won't have communities saying, they didn't tell me that, I never knew where. So, we, we always try in presenting something like this, that at the end of this, you will have a positive public awareness. We always look at effective strategies to ensure good stakeholder feedback. We have multiple community engagement forums that we would recommend, not overdue, but just make sure that you're presenting to, to. Okay? It's always good to know how much it's costing you to run your facilities. You can afford what you have, but per pupil cost analysis is also important, and we are prepared, if you need us to, to compare their districts with you, so you can kind of see. Not that that's necessary to publish and whatnot, but it's always good to see how efficient you are with your funds, and, and then just develop a good student-focused attendance zone modification. And the reason that's in there is if you need to change, let them know early. If there's any type of changes that you need to make with your attendance zones, and if you do, look at closing a school, closing two schools or three schools, then you will have attendance zone potential modification. And then, of course, the next to the last slide is to, is to identify and communicate to all families and staff that might be a part of this. So, the last slide is one that we think is really important. We like to highlight positive public awareness. We try to end, go to the end of this, that it winds up being a true success story. You've done your homework, you can stand tall with the decisions that you make. And then, on the right-hand side of this, these are some of the strategic thinking and planning that you need to be a part of. You look down at the bottom, commitment to student success, and that's really a lot of what we've been talking about the last 15 minutes, how do we make sure all kids get a good education? So, these are some of the things that we try to emphasize as you go through this, that these are things that we have looked at, the approach, it's research-based, best practice-based, proactive, carefully well-established processes, that goes back to the N6 and the Balbridge, we believe in process management, transparent, nobody can accuse you if you did this behind the door and all those kind of things, community involvement, data-driven. And you always want to put in this cost-benefit and cost analysis, because it may save you money, and it may cost you money, but you want to be able to articulate that very early on questions.
Regarding the community outreach, how do we get the word out? So, like, I walked, I live in Oakhurst, so Saturday morning and Sunday morning, I just walked around. I went to Oakhurst Park, I talked to two dads who had, like, two-year-olds in their strollers. Neither had known about it, so I put, like, the community meeting dates and times on those board business cards, because I feel like, a lot of the times, the digital stuff we do is reaching the same people. So, what are the ways, like, you're talking about those 1,200 children, and I keep saying this, because, again, just in my anecdotal experience, the parents that I talked to didn't know about this. So, it's like, hey, you want to come to one of these meetings?
Part of our role would be to help you with that. So, when you have them, you don't have the next day. Look, I would come to that meeting, they didn't know. So, we can help making sure, because it's important, as you look at change, whatever the change may be, that you can stand tall at the end. Yes, may not have liked your decision, but I did know what you were doing. We'll help, we'll help in any way we can to communicate as you move toward community meetings.
So, I do, I do, it is actually fairly typical, when you're doing large changes, that the community begins to pay attention once numbers start to be talked about. And this is, I think, where a lot of the concern comes up. And, and so, I think we're, we see a lot more community engagement. So, I'm glad that y'all are here. I want to thank Dr. Whitaker for, for bringing you guys. I think that's going to be critical. I also want to address a couple of things really quickly. I know that in the last board meeting, there was some friction and frustration that I expressed, vis-à-vis the process to date. I think part of this is the steps towards fixing that process. But I want to be extraordinarily clear with the community, and with the superintendent, Dr. Whitaker, that me disagreeing about steps in the process is not me disagreeing with fundamentals. This is a crucial need in this community, without question. And, and so, I, I, I want to reiterate my, to forward, to have these conversations with the community, and to arrive at a place where we have an early childhood learning center that is capable of serving these kids that have been dramatically underserved for effectively the history of Decatur, and that, that it is not that Dr. Whitaker has unilaterally decided to push this forward. Dr. Whitaker is responding to the demands that this board has made to address this gap within this community, and in doing so, is, is reflecting a value that we, as a community, have held, and that this board, maybe not unanimously, but that this board, as a majority, feels is critical. I want to make sure that there is no misunderstanding in the community about that. Dr. Whitaker and I can have a difference of opinion about process, that does not mean that we are not on the same page in terms of need, and I support her, but, thanks, moving forward with what we're doing here.
Any other questions? You've been a great audience and great questions, and I think we're moving in a very good direction very quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is executive session. Do I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal matters in light of a court ruling?
Uh-huh.
For member Johnson Davis makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
For member us makes the motion, is there any discussion?
I can go to the bathroom, does that matter?
No. Hearing none. One second, you can vote. Yes, all those.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. We have to move to exit executive session for the purpose of discussing legal matters in light of a court ruling where no votes were taken. For member us makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
For member Johnson Davis seconds the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, so, next on the agenda is some discussion that we're going to have around policy priorities for this year. So, at our last board meeting, I was able to share with you all an overview of the policy plan for the 25-26 school year, and, as I said there, we will have an opportunity to discuss in a future retreat. Here we are, at a future retreat, having some conversation around the policy. So, hopefully, you got an opportunity to do your pre-reading. If not, there is a copy in your folder, so, this was shared with the board. It is a policy update that was published by GSBA back in March of 24, or 25, rather, and it speaks a little bit about the role of the board and the role of policy. So, I'm going to give you just a few minutes, either speed read, because you didn't maybe do your pre-reading, or if you did, to go to a section that really resonated with you, and I'm going to ask you to make three marks. So, in one area, you're going to draw an exclamation point for a phrase or a sentence that you feel is really important. And then, somewhere, you're going to draw a question mark, so one idea that you questioned or you were unsure about, and then somewhere, like, a little soft bubble, one part that really made you think, or maybe challenged your thinking a little bit. All right? So, I'm going to give you a few minutes just to peruse, kind of bring out those ideas
But you may have middle school version.
Yeah. I just was thinking, like, when I was a kid, you tried out the JV football. It was like, basically, kind of 10th grade, you switched over to.
Oh, it's a.
Yeah.
All right. I'm going to bring us back together. Does anyone want to share, I won't even pick which one, but something that jumped out to you for one of these reasons?
No matter how many years one has spent in public schools, as a student, parent, or perhaps an employee, there will be a steep learning curve for those who are newly elected to a school, something like that, pretty much summed up what is important.
Thumbs up importance for you. Okay. Super, thank you. There is an adjustment, for sure.
Just one part that made me think, that challenged my thinking, is as long as the administration operates within the guidelines of policy adopted by the board, it may issue regulations without prior board action or prior by law. So, I was wondering, what would that scenario look like, like, in what kind of case?
Yeah. So, often, you know, we'll talk about the policy that's adopted, but then we need to come back and make the regulation, the how that goes with it. So, when we speak about things like that, or when you look at our policy manual and you see the regulations, that's it. So, the policy is the board, right, and the what, but then, yeah, that how piece.
But I did question, to your, to your question, if there is a policy, a regulation that's necessary, I'm going to inform you one publicly before I need to put it in place, unless it's of an emergency nature. We haven't had an emergency nature of regulation as of today, but. So, up until now, we have been informed on changing the regulations. That's what I thought, and I was wondering, well, when? No, when, when, once you, you'll hear me say often, once you develop this policy and pass this policy, we will work on the regulation, and if we do, if we have had to, and it's very few regulations, we put it in for information on the board meeting. It's not an item that we read, but it's there to make sure. But, and oftentimes, we will put it in the work session of the rollout. So, now that your policy has been adopted, this will be the regulation, this is when I'll talk about it in administrative staff, this is when I expect that the building leaders to do it, so forth, so on. So, we do that in work session, but the true regulation of creation and push out is not, I don't have to do it in an emergency fashion.
Two quick scenarios. One is the, like, revise the policy in response to the law, and we said, and the regulation would be updated, we said out loud ahead of time, and then we came back and said it was updated as part of our annual process. Same thing with JV, which y'all passed last month, the revisions for student attendance, and we said, there's a need for some regulation around, some clarity around the other accused absences, so now staff is working on developing that. Great. Let's have over here, so Tracy, and then Dr. Holton.
How will the effectiveness of the policy be evaluated? So, I don't, maybe I'm tired, but I feel like we haven't, I don't recall our doing that yet.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, like, how can we continue to measure the effectiveness of our policies? Or, when things come up, are we looking through a policy lens to make sure the policy is allowing us to implement it in effective ways? Yeah.
And that stood out to me is when changes to a policy are needed, it's usually better to review and revise the policy in its entirety, rather than editing, adding language, or creating a new policy on top of what already currently brings a modifying, creative language off the shelf and important policy that is confusing or kind of.
That's an area I highlighted as well. I was reading it.
I agree with Tracy there on the board. The document's the degree of success of a policy. Something I talk about, but as part of the calendar, how are we reviewing personnel policies and getting down on what is working, what isn't? I feel like we've been all in on, like, getting these policies in place.
Yep.
Not necessarily doing. The other one that really stood out to me is at the bottom, where it's like, Assembly makes it accessible to the public. And I know this is GSBA, and Assembly is an excellent tool, but the notion that it makes these policies public accessible, I think, is not really true. It almost needs, like, a, like, a short video on how to access Assembly, how to look it up, how to, how to do that opinion on Assembly.
All right. All right. And then, yeah.
I had also underlined how the effectiveness will be evaluated. I know, y'all probably know my reservations to, like, the new security procedures, that's one thing I'm especially interested in looking at, is, like, the empirical data at the end of the school year. So, if I recall correctly, we're going to be reviewing policies from like.
Yeah, so, a couple things, I'm going to go there in just a minute. Yep, absolutely. So, and I think, just another question, part of it is our unique history. So, it came up earlier today, too, that in '22-'23, we went back to getting all of our policies in place, right? So, getting the required state mandated policies in place, and over the past couple of years, we've been bringing additional policies forth, either in response to legal reasons, to, you know, watch out, student priorities, things like that. So, we've been adding to our policy manual over the last couple of years, so now we know we're at the point where, how do we go back and revise? I shared that with you guys last month, as well as, how do we think about the effectiveness measures of them as well? So, we're, we are ripe for that work to happen at this time. So, I'm glad you said something about Assembly, because one thing to just bring out is that Assembly is available on, all of our policies are available on Assembly to the public, to anyone. Now, yes, you have to go into Assembly, you know, you have to click it, whatever, but they are there, which is better than, than the days, you know, it used to be like, we had to keep a binder, and so, if anyone from the public wanted to see policies, they could come in and request to see the binder of policies. It's literally how it used to be. So, I think that's some of the background information, when they're saying, oh, it's so great and accessible. I mean, it is, it's out there, right? But this is the world we live in today, it would be shocking if it wasn't. But it is, it's out there and accessible. And then, one thing for you all as a board to be aware of as well, Assembly does have a really good search feature, so that little magnifying glass in the top, when you're thinking about what it is that you want to see in policy, and as we're brainstorming together policies, you know, often we'll do an environmental scan for you, and really, you can access what exists and other Georgia sites or other national sites through that search feature in Assembly. So, you can search and toggle on policies, you can search just our site, or our site and other sites, and then there's some other filters available as well. So, when we're, our other districts have in place, it's a great feature there to get an idea. So, I just wanted to draw attention to that for both you all and the public, so that you understand a little bit about, like, what's all out there when we're benchmarking. All right. So, from the article, it talked a little bit about how we make policy, and some of the things that, I did the same activity, and when I went through, I made, you know, my little exclamation points and all that as well, of course. And it was interesting, because it also talked about, you know, you don't want to over-policy, too, which I thought was interesting. So, it's about having the right policies, and, again, where we are in our history, making sure we're really prioritizing policies that truly need to be developed. And so, they talked about it being a big-picture tool for the board, where the mission and goals of the school district are served. And it also talked about the strategic plan being a backdrop and language being important when we're thinking about crafting policy. So, really, there were a number of questions that the article provided under the policy Q and A that talk about when considering policies, which question should be asked. Now, the first two are the ones that I've basically put up here for us. The others come a little bit more into that evaluation, please, so, or with the drafting piece, what does current literature say, how's it related to other district policies, to make sure we're not creating conflicting policies, for example? You know, is it likely to have compliance? So, that comes a little more in the drafting and in the evaluating phase. But for today's purposes, those first two questions really resonate, and that's what policies are needed to advance the educational needs of all students. So, what is it, as a district, that, you know, when staff does this, they often think about, hmm, here's something that's, like, not clear or hard for me to execute, or here's where we have a liability, because we don't have a clear policy. So, some of the policies you've seen the last few years have bubbled up, either because legal, or because, like, staff kind of need of it, some we've heard from you all, you know, or there's, like, a hot topic. Another great point, it's easier to do it ahead of time, proactively, than it is in the heat of the moment, so to anticipate where some of our needs and things might be as well. And then, also to support not just the mission and goals, but also to advance our strategic plan. So, do we need policy so that we can advance the strategic plan that we're investing? This is the time to suggest. So, I do have, for those of you who are thinkers, too, a little handout, a little note catcher in your folder, or out, and it just has those questions for you. And again, today is really just kind of this brainstorm, and it's going to be a discussion among you all in a moment about, like, and I know you don't have all the policies memorized, I know you don't have, you know, all the codes and what we have and what we don't have, but what I'd love is just a little bit of discussion with these two questions being the guide, around where we think we might need it, and then I can synthesize for you and we can go from there. I'll give everyone a few minutes of think time, for those that just need to process, and then we'll share out.
You telling me to shut up and make your way? Shut up, you?
You can jot down any ideas that come to your head, and then, through the discussion, of course, I'm sure more will come up. Give you another couple seconds. Right. So, with the backdrop of the questions, I'm just going to invite discussions, and I'm going to try to just take notes while you all are talking, if I need to chime in, I will, but I'm going to try not to. I will let you.
No. The question, I've seen the question come up in the community around the ECLC and our focus on, on pre-K, and it was framed in the sense that we have to incur costs for K-12. Why would we want to incur costs at pre-K or before? And the, I think what's missing in that question is the understanding that we incur the costs of not having robust pre. And so, is there a policy that says, even though we are not mandated by law to be providing services, pre-K or zero to four, let's just say, do we want a policy that says, because we recognize for equity reasons, because we recognize for incurred expense, because we recognize for a half a dozen other reasons the value that this has, it is our policy to provide as widely as possible, zero to four, educational opportunities for children within the school? And I don't want to make it too specific to, like, bind our hands in a particular direction, but to preempt that question, right? It costs us a lot more to fix the kids that don't get pre-K than it does for us to offer the pre-K.
I'm just taking.
I was thinking, based on our conversation earlier, when we were, when Julia was going over ethics and stuff in this conversation, I asked a question about personnel and was that, you know, the approval, that there should be a policy around that, how we handle that. And then, and let's.
Do we want to talk about tiers, like, maybe recommended tiers? Because we don't need to, I think, improve teachers, right?
Right. Well, I was thinking, maybe, it usually comes back with.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then, the other one was, I think, based on your question, and we got the feedback in the POI about facilities and policies, F, F, facilities management, F policies. There were some that I saw in the environmental scan that you provided that I thought to consider. But now, forget what they were, I mentioned them in my 101.
Long-range facilities.
Long-range facilities, there were, like, maybe three of them that, maybe three districts were, had in place. And so, it was long-range facilities, long-range planning, and then, I guess, long-range needs combination, I don't know. Yeah, the season two there are policies, I don't know.
What, how are we thinking the differences between a long-term capital plan and long-term facility plan? Like, are there sort of the, I mean, presumably, if we're going to talk about a long-term capital plan, it includes an element, just, right?
It's, yeah, it's called, so, capital is in a code in the policy manual, but it's actually, that's where.
And we don't have a policy requiring a long-term capital plan or facility plan?
I don't know off the top of my head.
We only have one.
Let's say, let's say we do need one, if we don't have one.
Yeah, we talked about that, there's one policy in its naming.
So, so, then, yes, I think, I mean, I know that we do long-term capital planning, and we're putting some structure and robustness around that, thank you very much, sir, but I think, I think we do want a policy so that we don't go back to the time we didn't do that, because there was a span of time that we weren't.
And then, the only other one that I saw, only one school system, the cap has it, but I just thought, you know, even in light of our conversation today about what to do with, you know, available or unused space, was the site availability projection. And I don't know, it feels like that would be involved in capital plans.
Or facilities.
Right. But it just seems like that should be something that we should, I guess, monitoring regularly.
So, two, well, one to confirm what you said, yes, it is one, FDC, and it's naming policies, naming facilities, that's the one we have.
Right.
I think, as we develop what would be that long-run facility plan, long-range facility plan policy, then we'll see, do you need a separate policy, do you need a regulation? I mean, you know, we can, to look into all of that. So, for example, what would be the annual capital update that we bring to you every September, is that considered something you want, regulation or policy? You know, that's an example of a how, but that how, certain things, I've heard from various board members, that needs to be in policy, I don't want this just to be something that Dr. Whitaker.
Just like the budget book we put into policy, do we want to put in the annual capital update?
Hundred percent.
Yes.
So, yeah, so, that's.
So, yeah, so that's an example.
This is super helpful. So what I'm hearing synthesized here is definitely some work around some of the facilities. And so our next step would be taking the feedback and suggestions you just did. I would work with Mr. Adams. We would kind of do an environmental scan, see which ones are out there, send you some sample policies and recommendations in that way that were kind of our normal dance there.
I think within that, one of the ones I had was school closure or grade adjustment. That might go into a, I mean, so if you had one school that was smaller or that was over populous, like kind of are cut off or more thoughts about, do you have pre-kins at this school? Two kindergarten at this school and no kindergarten here, one District One, District Two. If you decide that we need to decommit temporarily or permanently, that might go in.
The positioning of a school is not necessarily a policy a lot of districts have, but it's more so around state law. That was what we have found in our environmental scan. But it's something that every district is grappling with, which is why Mr. Wilson is working with everyone on it.
What I, what I would say, though, is I think there is value in looking at a policy that would describe how we go about selecting what schools get decommitted, right? Because what you, what you don't want is to just observational bias, say, well, this is our smallest school, so it's the one that's going to get closed. Like, you do kind of want to do the process that we're doing. And, and I do think in order for that to outlive all of us, we probably do want a policy.
One of the other ones that I had here, and then when I was looking at this, I was like, a lot of these are probably regulation, based on what you, you know, how tight you want the policy to be versus getting yourself in with what was going to change year to year. Your superintendent, or the principal, ability to change based on grade band. And then I was like, I don't have these policies. But the other thing I thought about was personnel structure. There's a lot of the feedback we get from community members is how they get de-processed. Are they overstapped or are they understapped? Or they don't understand job structure? So some policies, generally speaking, this is a backbone of how government or the superintendent, here, you know, we don't have so, or here, that's a, something like that, we kind of. What the governance structure, right?
So the governance structure really kind of is at this pace.
But then I was, then I, but I guess maybe my thought more was kind of what your kind of personnel structure looked like. So the people are thinking to themselves, there's way too many people in the hired at the Wilson Center that could pull that policy and see kind of generally what your governance structure should look like. Without much detail, year over year, you may add a person or a staff.
With the policy then, Carmen, rather than, so I'd be leery of a policy that told the superintendent how to structure her team.
Yeah.
But the policy, the policy might be you have to have a clearly published org chart of your team, right? And so that, that somebody that is curious about it could look and say, okay, there are 70 people in the Wilson Center and here's all the buckets they fall into.
That's what I said when I started reading these, I was like, these are more, a lot of the details that people are looking for, probably, regulation.
Although, I'm looking at Fulton County. Because this may just be repeating what was already brought up. But it says that the Board of Ed ensures that the district maintains an adequate number of positions to accomplish the district's goals and objectives. The superintendent or his or her designee will maintain a comprehensive list containing the job descriptions of all positions in the district. The Board of Ed must approve all job descriptions before said job can be staffed. And then it has administrative school leadership and it gives the type of position.
But that's, that's approving job description, not approving. So it said, like I said, I, I know the difference between Fulton's personnel process versus a letter public school person, personnel process, they're very, very different. But it does.
And the CAPs is all certain things.
And the CAP is, and Marietta.
So why don't we, why don't we take a look at all of them?
To her point, it does say that you're required to have something published somewhere that has your org chart.
Yeah.
And that could. Yeah, it's posted on the website.
Yeah, it was not under duty. It was intentionally hidden. So that, I, this is why I like policy as opposed to, there's a difference between just good governance and then you're forced to do this because it's in the like.
And it's, it would be in the budget.
Any other, I know we're low on time, so any other buckets of?
That's like the ones that are unique about the Caters. So I can't help but think about like the SLT and that structure and policies about their expectations and what we have for them would be much appreciated. And then I can't, I can't help thinking like, I mean, student success, that should be forefront of our minds, is instructional programs, if it's broadly, that's probably the area that I would most like to see kind of a scan of how are we missing anything? Is there anywhere the board should weigh in? And probably the area where we would start with evaluating with whether our policies.
Yeah.
Number one. Those are the ones I wrote down. Other than, I circled facility management. I do think Tracy's point of the board, like moving that up. Be build goodwill, give people something to provide comments and back home.
I just want to second that. And then I also want to throw out our social intelligence. I think it's, you know, I think it's something so unprecedented that we're really, you know, I can see personally, I hear from my peers. But since there's, you know, I'm even looking on simply, and it's like, it's mostly on the employee side. But I know teachers are having to be really innovative and that we could really be one of the districts to like start that conversation and like create something that isn't, you know, completely damning. So I just put that out there. I also, I want to, I wrote down many things, but I do want to have more one-on-one conversations before I finish this. Unless you guys feel like this is a safe space to just throw them all out.
No, I'm in a safe space.
Okay, okay, great. Well, the other thing on my mind, I know a couple, one of our current existing policies is the device of concept. And so kind of in that same vein, something I think explicitly opposing SB one that just went through, which is Riley Games Act, which is banning transgender participation in sports. I know we've heard a lot of public comment and stuff, students. And if we're protecting them at this time, then I can see a really powerful statement about something the board is interested in.
You mean like creating a policy that makes explicit our position on that issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Because previously, I trans students were mentioned, just in the, what about sports? Policy about sports, we, because when we were going through the compliance, trying to comply, we had made some changes.
So the Riley Games Act is a Georgia act, not a national. And so there were some pieces that we needed to adjust based upon Georgia state law. So like in the beginning of this, it really talks to, when do you actually, when is it a must that you adjust your policy? Your policy as a public school system cannot be, fly in violation of state law. So if we were a private school and not a public school entity, you could say that is state law and we're not going to abide by that. We will abide by such and such because we do not participate, we do not receive funding, any of those things with state law. That's not the case, which is why Riley, the Riley Games Act actually did have an impact on our policy. And Ms. Lynch, you want to add any more to it?
Can I, can I ask a question in line with Mia? So because, so there is a, there is, so, so we can't enact a policy that violates state law, but we can enact a policy that makes it explicit that we deport, protect, maintain the integrity of, we do, we will do all of these things up to all of the bounds of what the state law protects.
Yes.
But how, in terms of the equity policy, like, does that encompass, you know?
Yeah, I just think there's merit in making it explicit, especially because we're going to pass a policy based on legislative session in that time, like, like comply.
Is your question, Gina, whether?
I just think there's merit in making that like an explicit separate statement, especially given that we're going to have to adjust our policy to comply with that bill.
With the Riley.
Right, because it just passed. So making another, another policy.
Just on trans too.
Yes. Well, I'm, I'm just specifically pointing to, because we have one for H V ten eighty-one, which is device of concept. So it's just like, you know, like it's something we've done before, is my question.
So to Dr. Jackson Davis, your question, does it specifically, students, which in the equity policy, B A, BAC, it does not specifically speak to trans students. It does not. But it does talk about making sure you have multicultural, but not necessarily speaking to inclusivity.
I kind of feel like, and I, I'm a little confused about the, um, this is the one we missed.
Uh, the device of concept.
The device of concept. So we had to create that policy, right, based on, thank you. And so, I'm, I'm concerned about, I think we should, we were, and I started to put down equity policy. But I feel like we should make the equity policy more inclusive of all of these others versus a policy just around the specific group.
Or do you make it less specific? And then you have a regulation that vows for that, that kind of, the policy less specific in detail, regulation that outlines what, you know, for this specific population, it means this, athletics, it means this, you know, teaching and learning, it means that. You know, and that would allow it so that you can change it year to year or, you know, change it, you know, as you need to, give you that flexibility, just having the policy itself is locked in where you're bound by legislature, you do okay?
It did write down, so maybe equity is something we want to bring back for discussion and we can have these conversations, but maybe we want to bring that up.
And I, so the ones that people have already mentioned, I'm not going to repeat. But I noticed our professional learning was reviewed in 2022. So I put that in advancing the educational needs of all students. This may be operational, so I did not tell me it is. I'd love to see something, though, that allows us to see how it's working. And I don't know, you know, I know, I guess Georgia already does the survey and so you get that kind of stuff. But whether it's with professional learning or some of the programs, instructional programs, I'm still a little confused as to what we could do. But like James, I agree, it needs to be there. I think what I keep thinking about, and I'm sorry if I'm confusing things. The community meeting that we had at Oakhurst, when there was less of agenda and people were just talking and, you know, you had someone who's like, why is this online? And why is that not online? And how do you do this? And so I'm kind of synthesizing everything when we move to AI, because I'm not sure, Mia, if you were asking, are we going to have a policy that effectively says, despite AI's existence, we're going to still make sure that CSD students can think and read? Or are you talking more about a policy that says, we will be assimilating AI use into instruction? So I don't know, again, you know, where that is. So the professional learning is an easy one. I know there are instructional programs. I'd like to see more of what those look like. But I'm going to throw one out that's probably not popular, because I'm not sure if it is regulation or if it is policy. But when I learned about Fulton County attendance, I think it's a policy. I looked it up. So we just saw, I realize it's a year behind, the data about, is it 30-something percent of our elementary schools that are absent for family vacations, 40-something percent for middle school? And I learned this through another setting where it's like, yeah, my child can request some virtual days. The teacher in me says that could be an absolute nightmare to organize. But the pragmatist in me says, you know, the world has just changed a lot, just like people work remotely. And so encouraging people to come to school is great, knowing that they might not. And then there's a way to help that. So, you know, there may be lots of regulations in it, but from what I can tell, there are clear guidelines about how you would receive your attendance credit based on asynchronous or synchronous work. And so it's just, since I've learned about it, a little pet interest. Because I, I think if people looked at it, we might find some interesting data.
That policy well. I know it very well and lived it out behind us. So we know where it came about. It came about as a result of the pandemic. And how do you ensure bringing people and students specifically back and understanding the percentage of non-refusal, all of the different elements that lived to get to, to that point? So I'll know the story for another day.
The only other one I wanted to just throw out there. We can't control parents for his wrong time. But it's probably my job to use a school advisor to represent any different ends. And when they were considered as employees representing the organization when they weren't out there. So, you know, it was always a little gray until policy up there, so that people understood whatnot to do and at what point in time, like we brought the clock.
All right, so I had heard a little bit of appetite for maybe facilities management. You know, we can start looking at kind of what's out there and that kind of thing. So it might happen before April. I'm not going to tie us down to a month yet, but we'll look at, kind of see where we are based on the appetite. Or maybe we'll kind of introduce them interspersed with some of these others.
This draft, as you see here, is truly draft based upon the feedback we've provided today. We will reorder some things so that we're able to accomplish what we need to accomplish in this time.
Where?
Where's the equity policy?
Equity B, which is where operations currently for November. And actually, kind of ties me nicely to like the next steps, one of which was like, obviously, we'll synthesize kind of today's discussion. There are some policies that are going to go out of order based on legislation anyway. So the most known one is, we know we have to develop electronic device cell phone policy. It has to be placed by January, January for implementation next July. So we'll start talking about that. I will. And we know that we need to do some maintenance of some of these older ones as well. So some of these last reviewed by dates, we'll be pulling those up and at least reviewing them. We might not need to change them, but we'll at least put eyes on them and make sure that we feel good about where they are or decide when we want to tackle them.
Where would AI fall in there? Because I do think it's pretty critical to begin drafting with it.
So, so not policy conversation, literally conversation yesterday after cabinet. Esther and myself and Jennifer Dunn are going to start this, I, um, Strategy and Leadership Network. And so we have engagement in our. And so we have engagement in October on that. So let me get into that network, get to that convening, and then be able to give you an answer of when.
So best practices, get immersed in it so we can really inform, inform it.
Next question. So in terms of equity policies, when we were, uh, I think when we were reinstating it, that we think that we still need to change. So we, they're hoping to follow up to the year, but no, would it?
I think that what I'm hearing is that's one of the ones that we would want to bring to the board. We'd want to have some public conversation and pre-work about it. And then that would help us, you know, do one of those protocol type situations. It might take us one or two or more months to kind of help get it to where we want to, but then work through discussions that way to bring about any revisions.
Would you be able to look at other schools' equity policies at this point?
So I can look. I know that previously I think we were pretty much it.
Well, maybe they're there now.
Yeah, I would absolutely check. And nationally, there are some, yeah.
I guess there's actually a lot of. You don't want to deal with it. And so my, I would say a couple of things. One, we are probably one of the more forward districts in terms of it. We don't want to stop that. I think you're really aggressive to think it's a one or two month conversation. I think this is a, we could start it now and have a policy in place by March, right? So there's a lot of conversation to have around that, because I think that the. Well, I'm beating into it a little bit, but I think that there is some, some desire to strengthen where we sit vis-à-vis, even if it puts us in some opposition. So, um, also I know Jane is rolling off the board.
That's a nice number.
That's it, yeah. There is at least some value in having her perspective and input on it. And so I would say.
Rather than that, I got you. I think about one more now, and if we're running out of time, I can, you know, expand on it later. But I just, the interorganizational relations and whether it's a mill rate decision or, you know, we're looking at building the early learning center. And we know there have been some questions already with the city. We have legacy parks. I mean, with something that kind of out, I don't know what's in an interrelational, organizational relation policy, but it might be worth looking at in terms of helping people understand better. School district versus city, and then, I don't know, how we're operating together, but also separately.
No, I can do some research. Yep. All right. And then my last point there is just also, um, because we're sitting here today and it's on the, um, kind of to be reviewed anyway, is that B A B School Board Governance. So as written, it also outlines a theory of action, which, um, we have an opportunity to bring some coherence and alignment. We talked about strategic plan all the time, always, and then we also talked about system charter today. And so that, which was adopted in two thousand and twenty-two, was adopted prior to this board adopting this current strategic plan. So that's also one that, that was due for review anyway because of its date, but will also, um, be an important discussion to bring forward as well. So, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
We'll have Karen and Stephanie. Retired, yes?
Yeah.
Hmm.
All right. Um, so as you know, we have our Georgia milestone results and it looks good. Um, we have made gains in a lot of different areas. Um, so today we're gonna take a closer look at that. Um, the successives and where our room to grow is. Okay, we have some headlines for E L A. Um, these headlines kind of show us where we shine in this area. So we are ranked number one in the state, grade three, five, six, seven, and eighth grade E L A. This is the first time in a long time we've had this many grades ranked number one in the state in E L A. So we're pretty proud of that. The percent of black students who performed as proficient or distinguished either maintained that percentage or we increased it in grades four, five, seven, and eight. And that's one of our targeted areas for improvement. So we are proud to put out that as well.
Does that mean we decreased in like third, sixth?
We either, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not third, it's not the cohort, so we wouldn't have third grade.
Thank you. Thank you. For this one, we did look at cohort. This is not year to year.
Okay.
So when you, you take the test for the first time in third grade, so you don't have.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Typically, you're going from middle, elementary to middle school, you typically have a dip. And that's why, that's one of the reasons why.
But that, but that same dip would exist in every. No, this is cohort. This is, this is same group of kids, the same group of kids. I got you. It's not how this sixth grade class did versus last year's sixth grade. Okay, I got you, I got you.
Um, and again, we're number one in Metro Risa in all grades. So pretty proud of that. So let's take a deeper look at each grade level and where our present for proficient or distinguished landed. Um, we will see increases across the board. Um, third grade kind of maintained from year to year that proficiency rate. So at seventh grade, we saw a slight dip in fifth. But they dipped from eighty-three percent to seventy-seven percent, um, from last year to this year.
These are kids who took, who are in fifth grade, so if I'm looking at fourth grade, those are kids who are in fifth grade.
Right.
And they're not being compared in cohort.
Yeah.
This is apples to oranges.
Yes. Um, when we look at American Lit, we see that we had a slight dip in American Lit as well. We went from sixty, from seventy to sixty-eight. Um, but again, we're holding strong. Sometimes you will see, um, changes from one to two percent. It's not really alarming. Um, and we know that some platforms may see a sixty-nine percent here instead of sixty-eight. Um, some platforms, they round the numbers and some don't. So if you see a difference in any of the, um, platforms, in our platform or the Georgia inside platform.
Which grade is this?
Yeah.
Ninth grade is American Lit?
No, I think American Lit is tenth.
Tenth grade.
But I did, and I don't know if this is relevant, like, what I know is American Lit students who, they're studying American Lit and they're taking the American Lit E O C. But then you also have AP English Language students in my familiar, you know. So am I correct in saying that those indicator is largely tenth grade? It's not always tenth grade, because someone may need to take it as a difference, okay? And they may or may not be studying American Lit, like they may have had a different, which I don't think the test is really American Lit specific anyway. It's not like you're asked about authors, but so we're largely looking at tenth graders there.
So you're saying it would or would not be.
Well, it's weird, I think, because the state requires the American Lit E O C, even if not all students are necessarily studying American Lit. Am I right in explaining it that way?
So, so when it comes to E O Cs just in general, there's so many. As course progressions change from the D O E, when a child is taking the E O C will change. So example, when we get to algebra, the E O C in algebra, the majority of our students took it in eighth grade. Well, you think of algebra as a ninth grade course, but not when the, not when it, the progression changed. So, yeah, it's like, oh.
He took algebra in third grade.
Yeah, he did. He did.
That is exactly what he said. I didn't.
So we actually had seventh grade, you know, take algebra. So, so yes, all of that to say, then we had some children taking algebra in tenth and eleventh grade, so.
I feel like we have this discussion, I just want to make sure I'm interpreting the gains and the losses appropriately. Um, we had this discussion when, last year, um, are we, are, are there other kids in this cohort? Like, you know, kids who are actually in AP classes? So we had the same discussion about like that, um.
That history.
Yeah.
That history, eh.
So are some of the gains with the kids that were all, that already would have done well regardless versus kids that were kind of, you know, maybe needed the push and we can say we pushed them, you know, from average to above average? You know, um, I just want to make sure I'm looking at, looking at what I'm seeing.
There's an element of that in all grades and all test areas of students who start the year strong. Some would say, you know, they would be able to excel on the assessment, walking in the door day one.
Yeah.
I think that's an element to every grade level, every class, um, that's tested. So the way that we can really tell if we're growing those students as well as everyone else is to take growth.
That's, that's what I was looking at this morning, but it's not updated. But we still look pretty high up there from what I could, our little bubble.
Our S G P, our S G P is moving in the right direction. So in order to have the scores that we had, you didn't regress to the mean. You didn't take your advanced and gifted students and sacrifice them to support those who were in need of additional remediation. To bring them to where they need to be. And it's about to really rain, so come on.
I think, I think I was gonna more or less comment on it the same way. Like what, a score like this, we're gonna expect small fluctuations year to year. You, it's the longitudinal data over time showing growth.
Exactly.
Okay, so, um, you received this, I believe, without the numbers of students who fall in each subgroup. So there, at the bottom, we have the number of students that the percentage represents. The red, um, is where we are below pre-pandemic levels. So to your point, looking over time at performance. Um, green indicates that we are above where we were in twenty nineteen. And then the white indicates that the performance is the same or it's within one percent of where we were twenty nineteen. Um, so that gives us a look at all of our subgroup data by rate.
So. Then what will we do with this information? So, you know. What will we do with this?
So this gives us information about where I guess are, because rarely do we necessarily talk about multiple. We see here that we are not, um, at or above where we were in twenty nineteen. So that gives us information of to hone in to see who those students are and what is happening for those students. Where we are maintaining or growing that good news, because we keep doing what we're doing. So this helps us hone in on, you know, different pockets of. So that we don't miss any.
Although I wondered about that and I realized there's never going to be this level of response. Like it's just not practical. So I wanted to know more about what makes it proficient versus distinguished. And so, you know, I think what the state is saying is, you know, it's a proficient score translates to on track, ready for next course. Whereas distinguished is well-prepared and even moving into that post-secondary, which is kind of a little maybe specious at fifth grade, more so when you get to the high school level. So do we look at those as well? Because I realize, you know, you've got this fundamental need here, but then you also have performance indicators over here.
Look at it all, um, so in different ways. You know, this is just one way to look at, um, before like the overall proficiency and then we look at what you said. Are we growing our capabilities? That headline. C S D achieves highest math scores in pre-eight in a three-year span. Math performance surpasses pre-pandemic in grades four through eight and in algebra. C S D ranks top four in the state for math performance. And then here we are. So we see our arrows are up across grades three through eight for math. Um, kudos to our teaching and learning team who has worked very hard to make sure that our teachers understood the new math standards and implemented those. At the level and the rigor that the standard called for, um, and, you know, stuck with it. C S D teachers can be tough, but they stuck with it, so, um, and I think we see the benefit to that.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, like, I, I am amazed at the eighth grade math. I mean, that's, that's all new, okay?
Have, have we systematically let the teachers know how excellent field this is?
You want to tell them about your tour?
Yeah, so, so the end of a tour, I guess. Um, but essentially, when we sent out the press release to you all and to the press, I also sent a note directly to all staff from me. But I then go on what I call data tours. And so yesterday was my first data tour. My first data tour was at Tally. And so when I went to Tally, I'm, I'm sharing the apples to oranges, you know, type data. And we go apples to apples, looking at the cohort. And then finally, um, give them all the highlights, kind of the headlines you're hearing here. And then the teachers that are level four in student growth percentile. So the D O E calculated, who are a level four? They grew children. There was a general ed teacher, a gifted teacher, and an E S O L teacher. When the D O E takes all of that data, not from this year, but from the year before, and says, who are your top, your top teachers? Um, had them come up to the front. They had no idea. Um, one person, their last, their last name was incorrect. I was like, well, I apologize, but this is what the D O E said. And I just, I read the names out and I told them congratulations. And I said, obviously, we will invite them to come to the board so you can see who is growing children. So I literally go to the schools, to the faculty meetings between now and, uh, end of September, because of just the, when they fall.
Okay, um, this is algebra. We had a slight dip here from seventy-three to seventy-one as well.
Can I? Wait, wait, did, did your kids take this? I, I lost it, especially for the kids that are on this advanced math track. They'll still take it in eighth grade.
Eighth. Give me one more. Give me one more.
Yeah, majority will take it in eighth. The other, sort of, in ninth, kids on advanced math could take it in seventh. Could be taking it in tenth if they were behind or chose not to take it.
So it could be a.
That is a ninth grade parent answer.
There you go.
Yeah, there you are. I'm so excited about that.
Same, same as American Lit. We're gonna see fluctuations year to year, but it's the longitudinal data.
Right.
And just to clarify, it used to be like that, like it used to be.
But that progression change happens next year, when you math and all.
So that could probably explain.
But wouldn't you also have an eighth grader who is taking both of those tests? And so I believe, yeah, because if the eighth grader is taking the advanced math, they're taking that E O G and then, or rather, they're taking their eighth grade algebra test. But then if they're in the advanced track, they're taking the end of course. So, I mean, that's kind of double testing, but that's what the state, I think.
An eighth grader in the advanced class will take this in the eighth grade, but then might also have to take it again in the ninth.
Well, no, that's end of course. The previous one was end of grade, or what do they call it? E O G, that's eighth grade.
Right.
Yeah, it, it.
You just mean the eighth grader take milestones that.
Yeah.
And then all through them.
Yeah, yeah.
Both at the end of eighth grade.
Yes.
Which looks like they take test twice to them?
I don't know.
I think so, but I mean, it could be test five.
We had two hundred and sixty-seven eighth graders take, um, the algebra end of course. Okay, again, here's our subgroup data, just like we saw in our overall data. We have more green here than, than any subject, um.
There you go.
Which I just, oh, go ahead.
Very quickly, do we, for our, for the caller, um, three, forty? Very quickly, do we, for our students of color, um, thirty-eight, forty-five, forty-one percent, um, we see where they compared to their white peers? Do we know where our students of color compared to other school districts?
You will get that type of demographic difference once schools like mine update. But that won't happen until after you really get into the CCRPI part. So right now, what I have a data file of, and I can give you rankings, but going down to school level by subgroup, they don't give us that until we get CCRPI. And you'll get CCRPI probably by December, um, and then I'll be able to.
Because I think a gain for sixth grade math is to be celebrated. Sure, but thirty-three percent of seventy-two still makes me think we've got some work to do. But I would also like to compare that again here, where they are most of the years. Just to give me some context.
But and also knowing we are talking about proficiency. So there is something called developing, which is a Level Two. And some districts are communicating developing, which means you're not a beginning learner, you're developing, but you aren't proficient yet. You will still, you need support. So when we're looking at what systems are communicating, we have to be clear that we're talking about proficiency. That is not acceptable by any means. Yes, it's green because it's better than where we were in the pre-pandemic, but we still have a way to go.
Yeah, that's like, very specifically understanding how we're seeing such a decline, five to six, when other cohorts are going up, you know what I mean? Or, I mean, other, other, um, demographics are going up.
I mean, comparatively speaking, white students in that same grade banner are eighty-six percent.
And grew from fifth to sixth, three percentage points when you see a proportionate decline.
So this isn't, like, this doesn't represent.
Cohort, yeah, understood, understood, but, yeah.
You have to go deeply into really kind of what we talked about very early on, looking at multiple characteristics of subgroup performance. You have to look at it according to race, you have to look at it according to socioeconomic. You have to look at it according to, um, students with disabilities. And triangulate all of that data, data to see who are those seventy-two children and how are they being served and not, and not, you know, the names.
This is just the. Okay, science and social studies, number one in high school biology. Fifth and eighth, ranked two in the state, number one in the metro area. Fifth and eighth surpasses pre-pandemic, pre-pandemic levels. Eighth grade, number three in social studies, US history, number four. Um, so here we see, um, both our fifth and eighth grade proficiency, um, going up from year to year. For biology, same thing, that's pretty impressive for biology from where we were.
Where were we?
We were, and as I said that, I was like, you're ready. So I said it, um.
We, we need to turn back.
Uh, that, that'll slow you down. Um, that's eighty, uh, it was seventy-four pre-pandemic. Um, social studies, eighth grade, US history. So talk about, um, students not represented in a particular content area. So US history represents students who are not taking, uh, eighth or IB, um, history. So kind of. So though we are growing, that's less than fifty percent of our students proficient in history, which continues to be a focus for us, um.
This, this was the cohort, or not the cohort, this was the class that wasn't teaching effectively.
Their pacing was off. They stopped before, full nineteen hundreds, before they took the EOC. And they didn't get a full year of history instruction before taking the EOC. And so this was a.
Is that change reflected in this data or will we see even a bigger? A larger, I mean, okay, so is the correction that we have put in place to ensure that they are actually paced correctly reflected in this data? Or will we see it?
You'll see.
It's, it's reflected in this data.
Okay.
And we anticipate higher levels.
Yeah, yeah.
And it, it went from thirty-seven to forty-eight.
Good job, yeah, good job.
And the social studies, so it doesn't have any writing, right? It's multiple, because what I noticed is we seem to be higher in math and science than, like, just on that sheet, the number of greens for ELA versus math. And then you look at biology, it, it makes us.
I think it goes to one of the reasons why Florida superintendent understood literacy.
You made years of not teaching kids how to read, basically.
And subsequently write.
Yeah.
So that's why we're trying to correct it, okay?
Okay, here is our subgroup data as well for science. We only take it in fifth and eighth and social studies in eighth grade. Um, and here is the subgroup data for AMLEB, algebra, US history, biology. We saw the overall percentages from previous slide.
Are they, I'm sorry to ask this, but are the, the UFCs are calculated into the grade, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And the last final point of pride, thanks to Mr. Adams, he pointed this out. We lovingly call him Uncle Jarvis, um, actually Uncle Travis. Um, what he did was. Lovingly, because he just has that way about him, you know? Um, but what he pointed out is if we look at our rankings over time, we are improving how our students are performing and ranking in the state and in the metro by leaps and bounds. Because in twenty-twenty-four, forty-two percent of our performance ranked in the top three in the state. Twenty-twenty-five, seventy-eight percent of our performance ranked, um, top three in the state. And then we see the same data there for the metro area. So this suggests that we're not only making strides in those subgroups that we talked about, but we are also pushing higher learners to achieve, um, outperforming our, our fellow folks in the metro and the state.
I'd regret it.
Thank you very much. Right, congratulations. All right, um, next step. So there are a couple of things that we're really focused on. We want to protect the uninterrupted time for teaching, teaching teams. We heard that from teachers. We, um, teaching and learning helped us come up with a structure for PLCs. I work with the principals to make sure they had a matching schedule that honored uninterrupted time for teachers. We are monitoring that to make sure if something else or anything else doesn't, um, hijack that time. We also need to have the data rest. So estimate his team are working really hard to make sure that our interoperable data system, which is called EduClima, is up and running so that we can collect, analyze, and monitor student progress real time. Um, ensuring we continue with our professional learning, supporting leaders and teachers, and analyzing assessments, and writing action plans, and then developing resources, and strengthening the initiatives that we know are having a high impact on. Yes.
Correct. Here is the. Area. That's good. And, and, you know, where a couple of. Still have. Our students of, of areas in a couple of grade bands. Um, eighth grade algebra, eighth grade math. And some of those grades are just, you know, critical where. Especially like that transition from middle to high. Number, for eighth graders, when they get high school, especially in, in show. Three percent is heartbreaking for our students. You know, only nineteen or twenty percent are proficient in algebra. Maybe one of your next steps could be to look at some of those hotspots. Um, and when you report again, maybe, um, see where, where we can target some of those particular areas. Um, in addition to celebrating. A lot of these lack, because we can't, we can't stop. I don't want, I don't want this one to get lost.
I do, I think it's worth mentioning, and I said this in the podcast, but the last two years have been rough, right? Uh, and I know for you, Dr. Whitaker, and for your staff, and for all of the teachers, there have been a ton of changes made. I mean, ripping out the ineffective literacy program, fixing grading, ensuring that we're teaching to standards, following up. Like, there's just an enormous amount of things that have happened over the last two years. And we really went through that window where we sort of were feeling maximum pain, but the data wasn't there yet to show that the benefits were being reaped. And I think this is the beginning of us seeing that pain was actually worth it. Not to miss Dr. Sultan's point, but obviously there's more to be done. But, but this is what it was for, right? This is, this is what it was for. And so I just, I really think there is some criticality to our communication with the public, our communication with the teachers, our communications with our students, that we need, we're staying the course. This is working, it is working, and we're seeing double-digit, enormous steps. We've got to keep at it, we've got to keep at it.
I just want to throw in, I like the idea of, for up to time, the teacher team, who was brought up earlier, that we have a lot of flexibility with the calendar. Uh, and as we move into that part of the year, what we could do with one less day of instructors that was dedicated to attacking some of those areas, I would love to see. I think the rest of them are, well, not even telling them we're gonna take a day of calendar, but we're gonna take it, we're gonna hit these areas with this stuff on this day. It would be the best version of us talking about the calendar.
And could that even have, if possible, an independent learner day versus just a no fluke day? So it looks like there could be different versions.
Um, I just had, I know that last year was the first year of, like, American Lit honors and, like, I think the ninth grade, there was also honors class in June. And I don't know if the data would answer this, but like, even observationally, like, have you seen that effect? Data at all?
I don't know that we, we can say that yet, because last year was.
We'll email that to you when it comes.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Borup, for your feedback. Thank you, Borup, for your support. Um, good to see those in our reading.
The math.
Absolutely. Um, all right, good afternoon, everyone. I will be closing us out with AP and IB data. Um, I'm gonna start with our middle years program. So students are part of the middle years IB program in sixth grade through tenth grade. At the end of that, um, at the end of tenth grade, students complete a personal project, okay? So what you'll see here is, this, this is, you know, since twenty-nineteen, our personal project participation and scores. You see a dip. Um, and that is a reflection of us getting our personal project scores into the IB in a timely fashion. It is not actually a reflection of student personal projects. So this year was the first year that we did the Tools for Success class. And the personal project was a graded assignment for the first time. It's never been a graded assignment. It's been something that students would choose to turn in during their tenth grade advisement class. Well, because it was tied to a grade, we started, uh, teachers were offering the recovery and feedback cycle. And at the same time, this was new for the Tools for Success teachers. So we believe they didn't quite understand the sense of urgency and the finality of the IB deadline. So our scores, our projects were not submitted to make this chart. There is no, no students were penalized in any way, um, but it doesn't look good on our graph. I will just own that. Um, but Dr. Spool said next for this year, we've got earlier internal deadlines and there's gonna be a grading day to allow teachers that time to really get it in and turned into the IB in a timely fashion. So this is our, uh, reported personal project participation and scores for our tenth grade NYPD project. All right, so IBDP, okay? So here you'll see our students who were diploma candidates and the number of students that attained the full IB diploma, okay? So there is, there are a couple of different things happening. One, students can take IB courses and just be independent. That's not reflected up here, right? Students can also be, um, part of the candidacy. So they would take their six, two-year courses, the mix of the HL, which is the higher level, and the FL, and they also take theory of knowledge. Then to attain the diploma, you also have to do the extended SA. There's a service component. Um, and so some students choose not to go that extra step, and that's okay, all right? You can see our number of, um, IBDP students for this year has increased. Um, but when I talked to our IB coordinator, she said for next year, it's actually gone back down again. And so it just varies by cohort. Some groups really, groups of students really get into, hey, we're kind of the IBDP group. And then the next year it can go back down. So, um, but this is a reflection of kind of where we are. Um, but just know that the number of students interested in the, in the diploma program can fluctuate just based on interest.
Yeah. I think the data has a representation for training, typing, focus, um, of train students, but is there any feedback from the students to why there is this variability year to year? Like twenty-five to twenty-six is a huge jump. Two, twenty-two to twenty-five is a huge dip, but, you know, why you would see that variability?
When I have, the IB coordinator said it, it simply can be a group of students, just kind of their interest. But look at this, this also, you know, so if we go back.
Career related.
Yep, this is career related, and you see an, an increase in interest, um, for the CP program, yes.
I mean, I thought some had said, you know, I don't know how else to characterize this, but, you know, and I score APSA, so it's not a blatant thing in this way, but is AP a little more transactional? You take the course, you get your way to GPA bump, you take the exam, ideally. Whereas IB, for that diploma, you have to invest in it. Because the one, the one thing I wondered is the twenty-twenty-five group looks to have, like, fifty fewer students. But AP had about seventy more students. So, I mean, I'm, I'm inferring something that may not be true, but I just assumed some of the kids that were not doing IB in twenty-twenty-five just went over and took AP.
It's, it's the option. So to be committed to attaining a diploma is, you have been very intentional in all of your. in all of your high school years so that you are ready to commit to those DP classes in your master schedule for both that junior and senior year. That is, and you're committed to all of the fundamentals of what IB are, and you don't, you're not required for that for college board, any.
Yeah, it's it's a specific interest. So if you are interested in, let's just say, chorus and something else, then you you're not going to be able to do the IB diploma program because you have to take a certain number of these two-year courses.
I think that's also another slide, and we have this conversation last year, I think, where um, uh, something I'm personally interested in is that, you know, I I even have the conflict between like keeping chorus. So I'm an independent student because I was doing this and I want to take. And I don't have an ID elective, but a lot of other fine art students face that choice. And so looking at some kind of honors credit for, because we do have like audition-only advanced fine art courses. I think that could be really interesting, I'm going to like show other alternatives.
Yeah, and I'll show you next, or a couple of slides about how we're expanding some AP offerings, which AP, because it's a one-year course, or sometimes even a semester course, does offer students a lot more variability in their schedule to, you know, and then they can take classes in their interest.
Particularly where there is auditions.
Yeah. So here is our, um, you see a big jump in our um, CP candidates. And I went ahead and looked forward to twenty twenty-seven, and it's about the same. So we've seen a big dr- jump um, in interest in the career-related program. And we really attribute that to just, one, learning more over time about what CP is, and then some really intentional communication. So the high school has been really intentional about um, really advertising and helps helping families and students understand what CP is.
It pairs nicely with the workforce development CTAE programming that Decatur has. So if you understand CTAE, you should have a direct correlation to the numbers that you're seeing in the CP program.
So next I'll move into uh, AP. And so what we see here is a continued increasing in student scoring, uh, three or higher on our AP exams, and a growing number of students taking AP exams, which is really exciting because now students are earning college credit um, at D H S, which is a positive. All right. So future of AP and IB. So this year we added AP African-American Studies and Cybersecurity. So we got a pilot, we're we're a pilot district, offering, it's called Cyber One, but it's Cybersecurity. And then, of course, we're continuing the summer institute training for our AP teachers. Um, that's a really important time and learning, and our teachers uh, really benefit from it. Um, and we get positive feedback. So this year we are add, I'm sorry, next year we'll be adding um, AP American Government Seminar, Lit and Composition, and the Capstone Diploma. So first I want to talk about American Government. So when I came to you last year in this presentation, I talked about that we were adding American Government. That was in August. In September, the state rolled out new ELA course progression that were going to impact the high school in a big way. And so we didn't formally publicize it with families yet. And so when I talked to the high school, they said, can you give us another year as we are working out the scheduling and the addition around um, the ELA course progression? So we hope. A lot to go for next year. The um, I'll talk about the AP Capstone Diploma in my next slide. With IB, we're going to continue with our student-led profile, student learner profile conferences, and do a spring showcase. And then next school year, looking ahead, there are going to be some IB history course changes, and there'll be some courses that um, that pilot exams online.
One, that, so most metro ninth graders do have access to an AP class. Um, and so our students, right, last year or this year? And then, you know, so you, it's from instructional access, and then there's that GPA. You know, and you can debate weighted or not, but the fact is, a ninth grader taking an AP class is going to have a higher. Taking a non-AP. And so I just, I'm wondering, looking at, for, I think it's really our current tenth graders and our current ninth graders. And then second, is that AP gov? Is it just ninth grade?
Yeah, none of our classes are limited based on your grade, yes.
I think she brings up a valid point. When you fully apply to a lot of these. Even if you just. They are looking at the number of the elevated classes you can substitute. You know, some schools are able to possibly get ninth grade. They are kind of.
And what, and what I will say, I, that was one of the first questions I asked about ninth grade. Like, why don't we offer AP gov? There are, there are, uh, there are lots of different AP offerings you could have in ninth grade, or even you could push it down as early as eighth grade. It is possible. There is also, to the point that Han stated earlier, the amount of change that the staff of the high schools just take at once. Uh, and that's a culture shift for us to push it down. Even to this, to say you would have it in ninth grade is a, is a culture shift. And what I will say, working with the enrollment group and my role with college board, the rigor that is in, that Decatur is known for is known across post-reckoning. So they're not necessarily always counting our AP classes like they were at a school that. They know how much we already offer, and they can tell whether or not a student is maximizing their opportunities for advancement.
One thing I think to follow up with what Dr. Sultan was talking about, I want to know is, how many footnotes then are there so that a tenth, a ninth grader from last year applying to college, the number of AP classes that the high school is offering the year they're applying to college is different from the number of AP classes they were offering in the ninth grade or the tenth grade? And so it does, I have heard people ask about this. Is is, is this being communicated in a way that's clear? Sure, in Georgia schools probably know Decatur quite well. But for kids that are applying farther afield, the counselor's filling something out, and it says, we offer fifteen AP classes, but it turns out that that student only had access to seven. So I don't know, that may be a school-level thing, but it seems like as we roll each of these in, we need to be very careful about how it's being communicated in a way that doesn't present a kind of false scenario for a student. I don't know if that's the right way to explain this, but I appreciate that they're coming in.
Yeah.
How old do you have to be to take AP, you know, after?
It's open to any, but you would likely take it um, your, in, as a twelfth grader.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Um, is gov, like gov, it's seminomics, or if you go, does gov cover economics?
No, we'll have to add the following year, yep. And there's a, there's been different economics that then combined with the personal finance.
So then, so my portfolio for context is like seminomics, APUSH, and I'm doing IB world. So what that would look like instead is you would have to choose between APUSH and IB world?
Yes.
Okay.
So that is how you get to the determination of who is committed to an IB versus I'm good, we're just taking a number of AP. That's that's how, that's the level of intricacy that the student is making in their decision.
Is there a way we could, because I I do think personal finance is important, like regardless?
It's actually a requirement.
Okay, yeah.
It's a state requirement.
Okay, so there would be a required, like people would be required to take like AP?
Yes. You would have to, it wouldn't have to be AP, it would just be, yeah, an econ.
I think narratively, that's why they moved. IB doesn't have a place for an economics class, then ninth grade class, check that box. For everyone in Decatur, you have to check that box to get a diploma. If you took AP government your ninth grade year, you got to find an economics check mark somewhere. It doesn't have to be AP.
Right.
Macro.
All right. So we will be offering another offering, uh, AP Capstone Diploma. So the Capstone is a really interesting option. Um, so if a student takes AP Seminar and AP Research, which is a um, similar to independent study. So you choose your topic, you research, you write a paper, and you present, okay? So if the student completes those two courses along with four uh, AP courses where they uh, get a three or higher on the exam, you receive the Capstone Diploma. So it's just another option for students um, to kind of have that that recognition. That's right, yeah.
Are there already teachers identified doing, like teaching seminar?
We, yes, we have them identified, and they're already, they've even done it in the past.
So are they coming, like, is there a certain subject area they're coming from?
All right. So celebrations. Um, you guys saw our percentage of students scoring three or higher. More students are taking um, AP courses along with exams. I also wanted to call out that we offered AP pre-calc, and ninety-three percent of our students got a three or higher. It's so, it's it's great. I I don't know, but I can get it to you.
Can I give a shout out to APUSH as well, just because I saw the email, and I think they had ninety percent, which is like.
It was eighty-five, eighty-seven. Yeah, but it was very high. So APUSH, um, I wrote it down. Uh, it was definitely in the eighties, but I want to say it was eighty-five. But I can, uh, eighty-seven point six, sorry.
Worth tracking, like, or does it not matter if, it's, like, I wondered if there's more students taking AP or just coming from the IB pool, or are they coming from a different group?
For AP pre-calc, there was like an option for my class to do like a combined, like, like to do Algebra and Pre-Calc at the same time. Then they took that class joint, and now can do like calculus, I think, every year. So that was, I think it was the.
That's some, that's a method or something. There's a couple of paths where you could arrive at the thing. That that.
Um, a hundred and forty-five students took AP pre-calc. Um, yes. So uh, of course, so our IB exams, so we exceed the world averages in our Arts and Humanities. And then we finished our five-year evaluation. So every five years we do an IB evaluation, um, and we passed. And got a lot of great feedback.
And that's, that's what the program that starts, they're middle school and those.
That's right, yes. It was for the middle years program and then also um, BP CP. So, and that is it for me, but certainly, you know, excellent, excellent work happening at our middle and our high school.
No, that was the, that's for our session, yeah.
Yes, we're going to be here till the end of class.
Yep.
Ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay. Thank you for attending the retreat. Our first community engagement meeting of the year will be Wednesday, August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, from six-thirty to eight PM at the Decatur Housing Authority Research Center. Our next Board of Education meeting will take place as scheduled on September ninth, twenty twenty-five, at the Wilson Center. There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at four thirty-eight.